Go on the computer because looking at my.
All right, we're rolling.
Okay, I'd like to start the town of Columbia Plan Commission meeting Wednesday, January twenty six, two thousand twenty five. It is now six thirty one. Call to order. Mister Kenny.
Yeah.
Mister Smith.
Yeah.
Mister Ray.
Yeah.
Mister Burke is excused tonight. Mister Price.
Yeah.
Mister Studley.
Yeah.
Secretary Anderson. Vice Chair Colonian.
Yeah.
Chairman Flynn is here. We have a forum of eight. Emergency evacuation. Doja came in lead out to the front of the building. And please stand for pleasure lead.
Pleasure lead.
Thank you. Hey, we have approval minutes. First one is December sixteen special meeting two thousand twenty four. Have a motion for through those minutes.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
Have a motion by Mister Ray. So I have a second. Have a second by. Mister Kenny. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Five point two, December eighteen, two thousand twenty four. Regular meeting. I have a motion on those minutes, please.
Make a motion.
Have a motion by Mister Kenny. Now a second, Mister Price. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, election of offices. Somebody make a motion for election of.
I'll make a motion for election of officers.
I'll second it.
Just name who they are.
Okay, for the election of officers, I'd like to keep the the chair, Mister Flynn, Vice Chairman, the Colonial, and Secretary, Mister Anderson saying that we.
Before I ask for a motion on that, is there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion on those now. I have a motion, I have a second. I have a second by Mister Kenny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carry. Thank you. Okay, now we have a one year extension request. Caluka Estates owner after the John Caluka master plan approval thirteen lot major residential subdivision AP sixty lot fifty six, AP sixty eight lot one thirty seven point one. I twenty zone. Intersexual Metro Drive and Diane Drive. The applicant here, please.
Yes.
Okay, did everybody get a chance to read the letter from the department and a letter for hardship? Anybody have any discussion?
Nope, I'd like to make a motion to approve the one year extension request as uh read by the chair.
I have a motion by Mister Smith. I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a second by Mister Ray's. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carry.
Best of luck.
Yeah, Jack.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Didn't even get warm, did it? Thank you.
You're welcome, John.
Actually, I hope.
Would just be in a moment, we want to consider adding that agenda item.
Jim, and I was just gonna say um. We add, we're gonna add an item to the agenda. I guess it'll be after seven.
Yes.
To be for executive session.
Yeah.
The appropriate time will be the uh.
Yeah.
Required.
Well, that is, we'll add an agenda item. Which it would be uh.
Following seven.
Make it seven. Let's make it seven point two. For executive session. Mister Solicitor, would you want to add any?
Yeah, I I I think I just give you the wording of it. So the agenda item would uh to uh would be to add an agenda item for closed session. Pursuant to Rhode Island general laws forty two forty six. Five A two. And that involves sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or work sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or potential litigation. That would be the agenda right.
Okay, I'll make a motion as stated. To have an agenda item. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion from somebody.
Oh. I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mister Kenny. I have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mister Ray's. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're gonna go into executive session.
Wow. No. Because the, we should not actually stop this, we might.
Not yet. Yeah, you you have to now, we've added the the executive session item. We now have to listen, there's a very formal process you have to do. You have to make a motion to go into executive session. I've got to cite this again. And it has to be seconded and it has to be a roll call vote and then you can have a an executive session. So.
Okay.
Pursuant to section seven point two.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Pursuant to forty forty two forty six five A two sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or work sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or potential litigation. This is to go in.
Okay, now I make the roll call. I'll make a motion.
Then need to make the motion and second to that effect.
Second.
Who made the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Make a motion by Mister Kenny. Second by Mister Ray's. I'll do a roll call to go into executive session. We have a quorum of eight tonight. Mister Kenny.
Yes.
Mister Smith.
Yes.
Mister Ray's.
Yes.
Mister Price.
Aye.
Mister Studley. Secretary Anderson. Vice Chair Colonian.
Yes.
And Chairman Flynn says yes.
And now you would, you would um, I don't know.
This is not an interactive zoom. This is a zoom recording. Um, I'm not sure what will happen when we stop.
You have to. We're gonna go in executive session. We either go in another room.
That's what I'm thinking. We would go in another room.
Do you have the ability to put it on the screen, Alex?
I mean, we could probably do stop and then restart it.
Or can you just mute? And turn off the mic and the camera?
Hmm.
Turn on voice and rename us from thereafter.
Yeah, you should get rid of, you should change the name from executive session back to the meeting.
That's what it usually is.
That's your discretion, Chair.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to reconvene open session. No votes were taken in the executive session, and I would like to seal the minutes of the executive session.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second it.
I have a second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Ah, nope, no good. You have to take a roll call vote.
Oh, roll call, sorry. Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rayes?
Yes.
Mr. Burke? Is out today. Mr. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Studley?
Aye.
Secretary Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Colonium?
Yes.
Chairman Flynn also said aye. Okay, after reading all the materials in executive session?
No, no, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
That's not what you did at all. What you have on your agenda is a bond reduction.
Yeah. So I'll read the bond reduction.
That's what's pending, you still don't know.
Okay, bond reduction eight point one, the Oaks, Hope Furnace owner, D two homes LLC applicant, Oak Furnace Land Company LLC bond reduction were approved and recorded phases of a thirty-two lot cluster subdivision with street creation AP ninety-seven lot six, AP eighty-nine lot three zone R R two, and it's located on Hope Furnace Road.
But Chairman, in light of the staff report on this issue and the letter that we received today, I'm going to suggest that we continue this through the February twenty-sixth meeting to give the applicant a chance to come in.
Okay, I have a motion to continue to February twenty-sixth. Do I have a second by Mr. Rayes? I have a roll call on that. Mr. Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rayes?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Studley?
Yeah.
Secretary Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Colonium?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. Motion to continue is approved. Okay, next on the agenda is director's report.
Um, thank you very much. Uh, first, before we begin with any of the code stuff, I'd like to make everyone aware of Dennis Pagerty. He is sitting here talking to you. Dennis is our new housing planner. Um, Dennis is, uh, we're fortunate to, uh, have received a grant uh, from the new State Department of Housing
Right.
in which Dennis' actually his salary is being paid one hundred percent for almost two years as a full-time employee uh, through a grant effort. Um, Dennis' focus is largely going to be on all of the housing work we have, um, which there's no lack of it. So we've got plenty of work to go around. Dennis seems, uh, very smart and he's picking up on things very quickly, uh, dangerously so because we're, we're all, we're finding, we're trying to find work for Dennis as quickly as he does the work that we give him. Um, but Dennis is really just here to observe. He's taking everything in. I think the code discussion that's in front of us tonight will be a good one, um, for everybody. And, uh, with that being said, I'd like to, um, take a little bit of time to go through the volumes of materials you received, give an overview, and then if we have time after that, we can continue our multifamily, two-family discussion. We'll get through this, and then I'll get your feedback on how much further we want to go after that, how much time you want to take. I think it's fair to say the multifamily, it's not like we're one meeting away and we've solved it.
Right.
Every meeting, we make great progress. Um, but this isn't, our multifamily isn't going to catch up with this first batch of code. It's not like if we get that through in the next month, it joins the club with this. We're, we're, it's a separate effort. We'll work on it over the next coming months. Um, the goal for my overview tonight is to be highlighted, open up for opportunities for comments or concern. Um, I'm going to go through things at a high level and not go line by line for every one of these. There might be a few of these docs where I do want to offer a chance to kind of like stand through it on a page by page. Questions, comments, concerns is what I want to hear. The goal is that all of the same material will be in front of both you and the town council on February fourth. I'd much rather have the knowledge that you are comfortable so that when we bring it to the council, um, you aren't also curious or concerned with the content. And I'd rather get those issues vetted now, and if the council has issues, we can continue to vet on February fourth. Does that all make sense?
Yep.
All right. Yep, um, just, I guess you should clarify, uh, these all, these documentation all fall in the category of pound discretion? No. And so what other categories that are in this documentation? The categories in this documentation are, um, there's a good chunk of this documentation that is mandated by the state. It's us changing code because we are coming into conformance with what the state uh, basically already mandates. The truth is that if we didn't change some of this, we defer to the state code anyway. It makes it confusing when our code says something different. There are categories of this work where it is our discretion, and I'll kind of walk through each document one by one. Is this a discretionary decision? Or is it state law mandate? And then, um, some of the, even the things that are discretionary decisions are pretty straightforward cleanup actions, um, which it's, I think that's a common sense type of, uh, answer. Some of this includes a little bit of a policy discussion. Are we all on board with this policy direction? So there's gradations of it. I'm going to start with the driest stuff that requires the least amount of thought, we'll just blow right through it. First thing is the more top things we, uh, as we move through it. You're going to see this in the same order. I plan to bring it up for the town council, which is start with easy stuff, get head nodding, and then we'll move into the more, um, difficult discussions that require your, your critical thinking. That all sound good?
Mm-hmm.
No.
All right.
What do you start? What do you start?
Alex, if you don't mind, can you pull up on the screen the first one that I have in the order?
Oh, yeah.
No. Uh, and you don't need, you can reference your documents, I think the best way to go through it is on the screen. Um, the first one we're gonna bring up, out of all the code that you're seeing, um, most of it is changes to the zoning code. There are two sections, two ordinances that are not zoning code. This is the first. This is from the section, comprehensive plan, it's not in zoning, it's under chapter eighteen of our code ordinances, and it discusses the process for the preparation and the adoption of the comprehensive plan. This is, uh, we have changed a little language here, we're really just doing a cleanup on behalf of the town council, instead of having the town council read that they're a, uh, they need a vote of three out of five. The council is currently seven, thank you to Ron Flynn for catching this one. Um, this is probably um, one we wanted to change anyway, but there's probably many other sections of the code that will need to reflect it. We just left it as a vote of the majority of its membership. Easy not to have a number in there, it's like the number of changes in the future. What's really important is that this is all state law. This is the proper notice procedure to amend and adopt the comprehensive plan. We're just copying and placing state law into our code, so it's clear that if we wanna amend the comprehensive plan, this is the process by which we have to do it. Um, it, this code was silent on this, there's nothing that we were removing and changing, we were just silent on the process. There's a little bit of just make it clear in our local code how we do it. So that's the end of that.
I don't even see that in this package.
It's twenty-five, not eighteen.
Eighteen.
That's the one.
Yeah, look at the tops. If, when you look for that number, that's not it, you'll find the one that says.
This order is to be only decided today.
Yeah, yeah. And uh, this is gonna be a, by the way, jump in at any moment if you're like Doug, Doug, stop, I wanna talk.
Um, I got it.
David's getting his introduction on all this stuff, and David will have a role in in helping to comment on it, so. David, I don't mind if you wanna jump in.
No, it's fine, I just wanna, I'm just trying to follow along.
This one, this is a a code change that is a bit of local discretion, but what we're doing is we're changing it to be compliant with state law. All we're doing here, the only change is, this is not in zoning. It talk, it's under the Department of Commissions, this is talking about the Planning Commission's own section in our town code, it talks about what does the Planning Commission do, who are you, what what are your roles and responsibilities? At some point in there, it talks about your powers and duties, and then it talks about the Planning Commission shall have the authority to adopt, modify, and amend rules and regulations governing the platting and other subdivisions of land. That is the subdivision and land development regulation. Um, state law has it that planning boards and commissions are the uh, they're the authority to change their plans. We have historically added in the caveat that that should also be approved by the council, not required by state law, that's not to say it's prohibited, it's just not required. It's not a practice that I've been aware of that we do. I think this is us bringing the local code into better compliance, a document that is generally a document of this board, saying this board should have the sole authority to amend, revise, and adopt. That's, that's what we're doing here. Thoughts or comments on this? The town council might be a little bit curious why they're losing a power in this regard, the answer is this is what state law suggests. That doesn't make this illegal. We're allowed to say that for our purposes, the subdivision regulation should get approved by the Conservation Commission. We're allowed to make that rule, as long as you approve it too, is binding. We could add any number of other agents. In my opinion, less is more here. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Um, just one question, after land, is that supposed to be a comma going into two or is it period?
It's supposed to be a period, I think that what you see is the red removes the comma and then the period remains at the end.
Got it.
Yeah, I see a little error up here, with this, this should probably be removed, not a big one.
Yeah, okay, I didn't mean to hold.
No, 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 you're fine. All right, next. This is um, this is zoning now, the rest of everything you're seeing is adopted, it's changes to zoning code. Uh, this is changes to the notice and hearing requirements uh for, help me out, Alex, is this the amendment and the adoption of the zoning ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is the zoning code telling us what's the process to amend the zoning code. All the changes here are meant to bring us into complete compliance with state law. I can tell that David is already checking state law on some of these things to make sure he he understands it. I mean, that'll be a task that David has, it's not an envy, it's one of, you say this isn't compliant with state law, let me look at state law and see. Um, that's the only thing we're doing here. No local decisions, just bringing our amendment process into compliance with state law. Any questions on this one? We will have to follow the process to amend the code, to make our code talk about this process. The state law controls, we don't get to, we don't get to tell the state how we wanna adopt our our uh zoning ordinance, the state tells us. Um, this is another one where uh it's state law. State law has new rules for what um, what is the applicable regulations for what's called a a non-conforming lot of record, also known as a substandard lot of record. Uh, state law previously was a little vague and ambiguous as to what um communities were allowed to do. If you have a lot that was too small, it didn't fit in zoning, some communities are saying, well, even build on that lot, you should have to go to the zoning board. Ask forgiveness for the lots existing condition. There's been case law about that that suggests we've never had that right, that a a a lot of record or substantial lot of record has always had a vested development right that you're not allowed to strip away from it. This state law is new, and it's just making it absolutely clear. If you have a substandard lot of record, you don't need to go to the zoning board just to build a buy right use on that. You can't get in your own setbacks, but you're not allowed to um restrict someone from just approaching the development potential of the lot. Um, that's all this is doing, is it's saying what state law says. Does that all make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Moving on to the next. Um, this one also discusses the merger of lots, again, one hundred percent state law. Uh, there's a new clause on how um substandard abutting, substantial lot of records when they merge and when they don't. Um, we're basically just saying what state law says. Now we're into, the next code is vesting and modifications. Um, this again is largely just reflecting on state law. We had odd uh information and how things got vested. Um, we're basically making it one hundred percent consistent with state law. And this is introducing a new concept, um, which is called a modification. A modification is a type of zoning relief that you may be a little familiar with. It's a type of zoning relief that state law now says can be made at the staff level. It basically, if someone needs relief, let's just say you have a one hundred foot setback, and someone says, I can't, I can't build my building at one hundred feet, I can build it at seventy-five feet. I'm basically only asking for relief that is twenty-five percent of the code. Anytime you're asking for relief that's twenty-five percent or less, you're allowed to seek this process. State law allows you to discern where you want that level to be, it can't be less than fifteen percent, it can be up to twenty-five. The town has always had a process to seek what we previously called an administrative variance, if you were twenty-five, within twenty-five percent of the code, again, I have a hundred foot setback, if I'm seeking to be there, to be seventy-five feet away, eighty-five feet away, nine, you're you're within that twenty-five percent box. What we're doing here is we're sticking with the twenty-five percent rule, and we're just bringing in the state law, which now calls these modifications, and it has a specific process for how the zoning enforcement officer renders decisions, and how someone would mail something out to neighbors to seek this kind of permit. If a, if a neighbor comes back and says, I object, it goes to the board. If no one objects, then staff are allowed to approve that. Does that all make sense?
Yeah.
And then there's a version of a modification that is called a five percenter. If you have a hundred foot setback and you you wanna be ninety-five feet away, you're within five percent of the code, there's a version where that doesn't even need to be mailed out, that someone can seek that relief directly from staff, and it's an administrative relief given. Our previous code was never aware of that, that's new state law. That state law exists. People take advantage of it, whether it's in our code or not, putting in our code just makes it clear and consistent with state law. All makes sense?
And that's any dimension, sidelines, backlines, frontage?
Anything.
Okay.
Technically, someone could come in with a subdivision and say, every single lot of this subdivision is gonna be five percent less than the standard. Staff have an opportunity to reflect if that meets the standards of a modification permit. There are certain things where I might say that doesn't meet the standards, I don't see that your subdivision of a hundred lots needs to slice every lot by five percent of site. I'm allowed to say that doesn't meet the standards. And they can say, okay, well, if it doesn't meet the standards, then can I ask that relief from the board? Sure. But I don't see why you couldn't meet the standards on a one hundred lot subdivision, you have the room.
Yeah, you have ninety-nine lots.
And but then there's lots, they might have a genuine hardship, and they have a good case to me. But there's lots of situations where genuine hardship and genuine relief should be considered, they're trying to make it easier and streamlined, but if it's not genuine and not really needed, then there's no hardship. Staff have the right and role, say no, and then the, that applicant has the right to go to the board to ask for relief from the board. Does that all make sense?
Mm-hmm.
All right. We're moving through pretty quickly. This one's got a little bit of content on it, um. Members may be aware that we have something in our code, in our code called the Residential Mobile Home District. It's a bit of an odd district, because it doesn't have its own underlying standard, it's not like, what's the setback in your zone? Um, it wasn't clear what this district was supposed to be, if you re-zoned to it, what that really meant. This district is really meant, if you have a mobile home park facility, it's a whole set of code telling you what you're supposed to do with the mobile home. Um, we talked with our consultant about this. The idea was, this is really acting as a floating zone. A floating zone is a little different than an underlying zone, it means that like, the underlying zone, let's say you're in R twenty, some of those underlying zoning metrics still exist, if you wanna subdivide the lot, you play by the R twenty rule. You wanna have, you wanna have a setback from the property line, you play by the R twenty rules. But I wanna add the floating district, which would be a town council designation, and now I get to build mobile homes on one lot this far apart from each other. Again, you can't get close to the property line, let's say you're in an R twenty. Well, you can't get closer to the property line than R twenty would say. But now, inside of that zone, you're allowed to do mobile homes in a way that you couldn't just build single-family homes the same way. Um, it's not gonna get touched that much. The mobile homes are where they are, I don't envision we're gonna see a lot of new big mobile homes. This is just clarifying that this tool is a floating zone, it's not meant to replace the zone, it's meant to sit on top of it and work together. Um, that's largely what you're seeing here, and all of the code in here. This is the one section where we amended code a little bit sparse throughout, mobile home district isn't handled in one section of code. So we kind of handled this a little bit sparse throughout different areas of the code where it's addressed. Does that all make sense?
That's just the one thing. Oh, sorry, yeah.
You're fine. Got it. Um, there, we do have code, and then I I left a comment in here, a note to solicitors. Um, this, like, this is an example where we were making a decision, our zoning code would say, hey, if you wanna have a mobile home district, you know, this is what it looks like, give us these kind of facilities as part of your application. That reads that as a checklist. That's an informational checklist. We're gonna take that same information, and assuming the council and you agree this is a good direction to go, we're gonna take that out of zoning and make it a checklist if you want a mobile home district. Here's the checklist, give us an application with its information. None of this is going away, it just doesn't need to be in zoning. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Um, I don't know if I had any other notes to solicit from this one. Is there a reason why it's off the screen, oh?
I guess, what is?
Uh, no, I found it, that was the the cursor was uh. All right, that's, any questions on that one before I move on?
Oh.
All right. The next one is um, the zoning board of review. Um, there's an entire section of code dedicated to the zoning board of review that process the procedures and their standards. The only thing to note here is that we're by and large.
You have a question?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, about this or about the R and D?
It's just the mo- the um.
Yep.
The mobile home.
Yeah, go ahead, David.
Um, there's a fee in here on this code. So, only the council can establish a fee, so if you take it out of the code, where are you gonna put it?
In a checklist.
Well, who's gonna, the council?
The council still does approve all of our fees, it's part of a fee schedule.
Okay, so.
And, but that, it doesn't mean that the fee has to be in the code.
I didn't say that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just don't wanna pull it out of here, and you can't just add it on.
No, no, we we're not gonna change that fee.
Okay.
Um, at some point, I think we do wanna revisit with the council, we'd like to change some of our fees, but we're taking bites at a time. This, this is an important bite for us to get some of this stuff cleaned up. We'll bring the fee conversation to the council at some point. Um, all right, we're all good on mobile homes?
Well, one more.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, the, the item about the impact analysis on, on, no.
Okay.
Second, I'm I'm on page two.
Yep.
So, an impact analysis, you make it a checklist item instead of a zoning code requirement.
Yep.
So it's not gonna be a standard.
It will still be a, a checklist requirement, it's still a standard. I mean, a, an impact analysis is a report. Right? I mean, that to me is a checklist.
But what does it say for a subdivision, is it in the ordinance or is it in, is it in the checklist?
What do you mean?
We get an impact.
Oh, yeah, uh, yeah, that's a checklist item.
Oh, I, I, you're you're, but you're gonna create the checklist
Correct.
item as part of the subdivision regulations. Where are you, where's the authority gonna come for the checklist item?
We can put this in the subrings.
That, I mean, I did.
Most of our checklists, the the subrings refer to the fact that we have checked.
The authority to make checklists though is in subrings, so.
Yeah.
That's how we did it.
So that's what you're gonna do on this.
So, yeah, this one will have to go, the subrings will have a subsection. Uh, the, there will be checklist maintained in the office of planning on the following issues, and it might, it might even list like minor.
The planning board, instead of being passed by the council to create this checklist, the planning board is gonna create the checklist pursuant to the authority in the subdivision regulations. That's all I'm saying.
Right.
And the sub- regulations have to clearly include these mobile home.
Yeah.
And in practice, it'll be listed like all the other ones on our website.
Perfect. Yep, yep. That makes sense, all right. Um, so on the zoning board of review, most of what is happening here is the state law. Um, it's a little convoluted, you see massive sections deleted, only because we thought that they needed to be reorganized, and they're then brought back in again, and other elements, so here we're deleting lots of text. The comment, the the item here is, we're not deleting this and it's going away, it's being rewritten in these sections, it was just easier to bring this into conformance with state law, instead of trying to wordsmith everything, remove all of this, we're gonna handle it as part of a different section. There is one policy shift that we're making through this. It's a policy shift that we're gonna suggest to the planning commission in their own subrings at a future date as well. We currently have code that says that if you have a special use permit in the R five district, that you should mail notice to every resident and every property within two thousand feet. If you're in the R three or
R two.
R two, you should mail notice to every resident within one thousand feet. Our recommendation is that those numbers are very high. We believe those numbers came when they were applications for more aggressive types of uses like solar or wind. That was the origination of a lot of these. The truth is that right now, solar or wind are not allowed, they were part of special uses that got turned off, we're not recommending to turn them on right now. When, if, and when, if we ever wanna bring those use back, we can assign a radius to a specific use with the code. What's happening now is someone that wants to build a shed that's five feet closer to their property line than they should in the R five, is sending out radius notice to everyone within, basically a half a mile.
Yeah.
And we get it all the time where people are like, are you crazy? And we tell people all the time, this isn't meant for your small time applications, it's meant for the big ones. But the truth is, is that we don't have the big ones right now. All we have are small ones, and if we bring the big ones back, we can give them their own notice at that point in time if we wish to. We did an analysis, is that memo available, Alex? There it is. You'll see this.
It's further in our packets.
Yeah, this is an analysis, it's a quick two-page memo that uh, it's drafted to the town solicitor's office uh from, from me, and it really basically does an analysis to show you that no one's using one thousand or two thousand feet, in fact, most communities are using two hundred. Planning staff. Planning, yeah, thank you, so there's that, you know, we got Cranston is offering four, four hundred. Everybody else is offering two hundred. Um, that's what state law would require, a minimum of two hundred. What we're suggesting in our ordinance is we historically allowed five hundred for a range of our businesses. We're not gonna change that, five hundred can be what it is, we're just saying, let's drop one thousand and two thousand, and let's make everything five hundred, with the exception of R twenty, which has always been two hundred. We're not gonna bring R twenty up, we're just gonna drop down one thousand, two thousand, five hundred, this is a little bit just more common sense. Your subrings, which talk about the notice requirements for subdivisions and major land developments, share a similar format. If it's R twenty, then it's two hundred, the subrings are oddly silent about projects in commercial zones, which is an error on the code and one we need to clean up. You do get projects in those commercial zones, we have historically been defaulting to five hundred. This is gonna, this one thousand, two thousand exists for projects in the RR five and the RR three and R two. Again, you you know, these projects, just because they're in R five doesn't mean that half of RR five needs to learn about them. Um, the idea would be five hundred feet adequate, and it doesn't take long, if it's a project that a lot of people aren't happy with, they'll learn about it, it doesn't take long for people to learn about a project, if there's one of scale they're not happy with. We feel pretty comfortable, all we're doing right now is the zoning change, the special use permits. You can have a separate conversation on changes to the um subdivision regulations. That's a separate effort we're gonna bring to you in the next couple of months, that's some cleanup of the subrings. One thing we wanna do before we do that, is change that code that says, subrings are just controlled by this thing. That we wouldn't bring subrings to the council as well. Does this all make sense so far?
Good question.
Yeah.
So, how how many square um? So, how, how many square, um, how many square feet in RR five of that property?
What do you mean?
What's the size?
Five acres.
Five acres.
So, yeah.
And so, I think that's where it comes from, right? And how many, and, and the other one R two is two acres and three acres, so the question I have is, although you're looking at these other towns. Is there any other town that has an RR five on this list?
It's a good question, because that's why, because theoretically, if you do two hundred, you're only gonna pick up four people. Right, if you read through the memo, it does spend a good amount of.
Okay, it's so big.
Yeah, if you, if you read the memo, it spends a good amount of time talking about that. Even if you're in a big zone, that doesn't mean that the impact of a particular project gets bigger. You're right, if there's a big zone, you're gonna get less properties. But the goal of notice wasn't, we need, no matter the zone, we need to hit around a hundred people, that wasn't the goal of notice, the goal of notice was to say. A project generally has a range of impact. And our feeling is five hundred feet's pretty good. I mean, I'm not saying that it's not, it's not possible for someone to put a really aggressive comp permit in the RR five. That the entire community would like to know about. Usually projects of that scale, of that aggression, people find a way to learn and they can come to the meeting, but five hundred feet still is a good range. You could have an aggressive comp permit in RR two, or I'm sorry, in R twenty. And that, the, it's the scale of the project that should really dictate the notice, not, not.
I wasn't questioning, I just, I just wanted. Make sure that you understood, that if you do five hundred feet around that property. You know, and there's four lots, it's all you're gonna get is those four lots.
In an RR five, that might be fair.
I mean, that's it.
Right, but the question is, is it based on what the actual impact of the surrounding properties are gonna be? Or the feeling that others may have in some development in that area that they just don't wanna see?
Well, well, but, but also, and I, I'm, I'm just, I'm just raising it so you, you do this, also. Don't forget, a butter has certain automatic legal rights in court.
Yeah.
They have standing. If I'm not in the butter, I don't have standing, I can come and wave my hands. But when I go to court, they're gonna say, you're not in the butter, you don't have standing.
Yep.
So, I just throw that out. I just throw that out because I saw that RR five, now, I, I don't know.
But these are measured from the property boundaries, not from the center, the centric.
If there's another five, another five acre lot around, I'm still. I'm not, right, how, how long is five acres, it's more than five hundred feet, isn't it?
You'll see, yeah, well, again, you.
So you're not gonna catch anything.
We could pull up a visual to show like what.
You know what my thought is, and I'm sure you'll relay this, it's the council that's gonna.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, let them figure it out. No, but, but it's just a more product, you do consider that.
That's why this document fell. Later in the progression, this is a policy choice. We're making a policy choice to say that in these bigger zones. A smaller radius is still appropriate.
I get it.
We made at one point a policy choice that said, no, it isn't, if you're in western, you better let half of western know if anything changes.
And that's, you're right, so the policy from the planning standpoint and the impacts of the surrounding properties, this is adequate. But the council may have a different view, which they did when they adopted that, that's why I think.
This, this one's not an automatic sell, however, that's why we asked. And that's why we have this memo to provide a little more background, this memo is, looks like it's got some formatting issues here.
Um, what I would do is I would see situating West Greenwich and add those to the list. Maybe the budding communities, maybe exited.
Exited, that's another loss. Well, if you look at it this way. If it's, if it's, if I have five acre lots all around, and it's two thousand. I'm still only gonna get those four people around.
Oh, is it? I didn't do the math, but yeah.
It depends. How many, we had that whole.
You also gotta think too, there's a lot of non-conforming lots in the yard, so you're putting an extra.
Yeah.
Um, level of notice that wouldn't be required in, say, the, the R twenties, because you have lots that are the same size. As the R twenty zone and the R five zone, never noticing. I mean, we, we've had situations where the butters list is literally ten, fifteen pages long.
I, I wasn't bringing up to.
No, no.
Contest your policy, I just wanna make sure you considered.
I, I don't mind devil's advocate when we get to these things. What I wanna do is hear from you now, and if you have a concern now, let's talk about it now, when we're in front of the council, if you have a concern. Then the council's gonna hear that and say, well, if they're concerned, and they're more familiar with this, I'm concerned. If you have a concern, I wanna hear about it. If you're, if you're comfortable, then, you know, we'll just keep it moving.
You might wanna give an example of what a five hundred one looks like, and what a thousand, two thousand looks like in a five hundred. Just so you have an idea, I'm not saying do that now, I wouldn't.
It's easy, but it's easy to do.
It's easy enough. Uh, this is the RR five, it's this tan zone, if you zoom in close, I'm just looking for an area where the lots are a little tighter. Let's just pick a lot, let's say it's this one, and then you do a butters. And then let's see what.
You gotta type it, yeah, no, it's gonna be my foot.
This is, if you wanted to build a shed, that's who's getting noticed.
Okay.
If you wanna, if solar and wind aren't allowed, eventually if there's an aggressive use. Let's say quarries is when we wanna give a bigger radius, someone wants to start a new quarry, some of them are less realistic than others, not a lot of new quarries are started, most people are just building.
Might be two thousand, see what it looks like. That's the question, right? You know what I mean?
That's, that's my. So this, this one, this one, this went to, this captured one hundred and eight of butters. Where five hundred.
Hundred what?
Is capturing twenty.
Yeah, and I still think.
Right, it's more than what most communities are.
Yeah, I almost feel bad for the person that, that's building that shed that he has to send out that many notice.
That's what is the most common, uh, in, you know, the most common discussion we have. Is how this is typically out of whack for what people expect when they come in. And you have in a butter who has to pay, pay for the mailings, and they say, what are you kidding? And I mean.
More than this yet.
Is this just that every single zone that you can't separate it out and say?
No, you can separate it by zone, we're still leaving R twenty as its own.
No, 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 what I meant was, um, a new development versus adding an accessory structure to levels.
Right, the subdivision.
This is any.
That's correct, all we're changing right now, and the truth is all we're changing right now is this, is this, is the zoning for special use permits. Oddly enough, John, variances always said two hundred, and I think staff always just interpreted. As follow that same thing as special use permits, we also lived in an era where almost so many things got a special use permit anyway. They were.
I, 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 let me just rephrase, rephrase my, my thought on this. Anything other than a change in use from residential, that's what, in other words, if they wanna come in for a zone change. To operate a retail store on one seventeen where it's currently residential. They still only have to notice five hundred feet, whereas the people in that area might say. That is a change in use I would have liked to known about, because not, you're not just asking for a dimensional variance to build a residential structure. You're changing the entire zoning of that lot. And that's the stuff they wanna know about, cuz that's what happened with the wind farms and the other stuff up there. Things creep up, next thing you know, you've got someone running a, a, a gun range, a, a lodging operation or a mill. Or something like that out there, that people get upset about.
Yeah. Um.
In other words, a complete change in use of the property.
Are you talking about a zone change or a use variance?
For a use other than residential.
The zone change goes to the council.
So a use variance would still, like, basically what we're gearing this code up for.
Yep.
Is that all variances and special use permits would follow these new notice rules, which is five hundred everywhere except in the R twenty. Where we're gonna say it stays at two hundred, which basically the change represents a reduction down.
But the exception that I'm just throwing out there is that. For a change in use that other than residential.
So he's saying, you, you're carving out one type of use variance.
The, that could be done. But my question would be, um, we've, we've approved use variances before. Uh, we approved one, uh.
Firehouse.
The firehouse, you guys remember that?
Yeah.
It was a use variance because it was an industrial zone and they wanted to convert that firehouse to residential.
That was less intensive.
So, that property, as an example, was way over here, you guys would know it better than me.
Yeah, but that was in the R twenty.
Here I can.
Yeah, but wasn't that making it less intensive?
Yeah, the use variance is a use variance.
No, no, I, I think that the.
Residential to a commercial use. People wanna know, especially in RR two, RR three, RR five, that. The land that they moved out there because they wanna be in a residential zone, and now all of a sudden they find out, they got someone over there running a cannery. Or they got somebody that's, uh, storing trucks or repairing something in their backyard that they didn't anticipate. That's, that's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, you are correct, and I think that that's a fair distinction to make. Um, not all use variances are created equal. We perhaps could find a way to draft this code to carve out. That use variances that are being requested in residential zones should have X radius. I think there's a, I think that that would be fair to carve out. Um, that's what a five hundred foot radius looks like for, um, that one use variance we did give, which you capture fifty one. But that's only capturing, you know, they would have to notice these guys too. But for example, this is, when we get into these, um, these eastern parcels. You know, this is close to three hundred of just the Coventry side. So that, for whatever reason, we said all use variances, no matter what, get two hundred thousand, like, this guy would be sending mailing to, I don't know, six hundred people. Um, but.
No, no, I said, in a residential zone, it's not a residential zone, that was already zoned. Either industrial or general business over there.
Um, there are a few occasions where there might be a pre-existing non-conforming business in a residential zone, it's been operating there for five decades. And then they wish to expand, that's where they probably are triggering a level of notice that we would say, that's a bit much. When someone says, I wanna open a McDonald's drive-through in the middle of the RR five, we all agree, that's not likely to happen. But we'd say, yeah, notice the world.
We're not gonna get a result, no, I just threw it out there, as you said, so you kinda know.
I don't mind that concept. Let me pull the board.
Yeah.
It makes it a little more complex, that means that instead of just very quickly simply saying five hundred feet for everyone, R twenty. Then there's a, gonna be a carve-out in the code, in the, in the case of the use variance in these zones. What's the quick poll of the board, should we be considering a change to the code there? For an increased radius.
Yeah, I don't think. I make sense. I understand what you're saying, I kinda agree with what you're saying.
Alright, why don't we draft a carve-out for that? This is, this is the purpose of this meeting, cuz if that's what you think, I'd rather have a draft that this group as a whole supports.
Yeah, where you can.
Then we can go into the council, we can talk about it, and we can say the rationale behind these things, that's, that's like, this is where the policy conversations are starting to take hold.
And that's gonna be a stronger argument to counsel.
Yeah, the council's probably.
As opposed to black and white with one thousand, two thousand, you're saying you're protecting the residential zone.
Yeah, yeah, you've got good notes on this, Alex, I mean, I kinda.
I mean, it might not work, but.
Use variances in residential zones, I mean, would it, it, it's a little tricky because this is like, imagine, this is how the code's written. We talk about the notice down here. This is where we say five hundred feet unless you're in the zone. We talk about what's triggered for that notice up here, so we're gonna have to like, find a way to write this in a way that we carve out. These things get this notice, this specific application gets a different.
And to be just put provided however, any. I don't know what you wanna call it, change in use from residential to a.
We'll, we'll words.
And Rick, are you thinking like, just the rural residential zones or R twenty as well?
Well, the R twenty is already.
Cuz it, yeah.
The R twenty, you haven't changed, it's only those residential zones that you're going from two thousand to one thousand that you're trying to cut.
That makes sense, so not every residential zone. You wanna say in the RR five and the R three and the R two, those three zones, if it's a use variance.
For anything other than.
What's the number? One thousand, two thousand?
Well, you had a thousand for the R two and five and just keep it the way it was, I mean, I don't know, or go with the thousand, I, I'm not, I don't know what the number is. I'm just saying, it should be different.
I think when you go in RR five or R two, a thousand would be better cuz the example Dave brought up, you're not covering a lot of property.
For non-resident.
Five hundred.
That's all it is.
We're not.
Yeah, the RR five seems to be the most dramatic example, right?
Let me pick just a lot in the middle of RR five, this is a lot that, um. Oh, nice. Uh, well, we'll use him as an example, that's what two thousand looks like.
Go one thousand.
And so that's seventy-eight people.
Alright, that's not bad.
Well.
But go one.
It never works like that, I know.
I know.
There we go.
Now you wanna talk about something interesting, you look at all the little lots to the left of that. That, that's Fox one right there. Those are little tiny lots that have been.
There's lots of little lots in the R five.
I was trying to change my five acre lot into a McDonald's restaurant, that afternoon by thirty-eight people?
Yeah, yeah, cuz we're not talking about the shed, we remember, we're not changing the use, if a guy wants to put a shed up, it's still five hundred. Only if he's changing from a residential to a non-residential use on the property.
Let me ask you this. Do you think that agriculture is a non-residential use?
No, no, unless it's, unless it's commercial, unless it's.
So, these are the questions staff have to answer, when we use the word residential or non-residential use, if you look at our use code. Uh, suddenly it doesn't become quite as clear, we allow borders as a residential use, which is essentially like a, an air, you know. I wouldn't call it an Airbnb, it's almost like a, a bed and breakfast.
Regular B and B.
We have to come up with, how does one interpret, what's a residential, non-residential, agriculture's like somewhere in the middle. We have to be, I don't mind the direction we're headed, staff can do a, this is better to draft for staff, cuz you can't group think the words make. But it would help me to know one thousand or two thousand.
One thousand.
Look at that.
I mean, yeah.
Law gonna find out. Oh, God, yeah.
Is it less controversial to just keep it as it, you know, as it is, like RR five, two thousand, or the. Do you guys have a sense that for them?
We could do that.
If it's down a thousand.
We could do, here, here's, RR five is the gray, RR three is green, the blank is RR two. We could keep it one thousand out here, one, I'm sorry, two thousand out here, one thousand in here. If you guys are good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, the key is it just has to be, again, he's not pulling, or adding the garage or putting up a shed or.
Not residential.
Even the two-family or accessory, whatever those are fine, but if it's a.
Other than.
You're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna let the people with the shed off the hook though.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I will, will.
Non-resident.
We'll put it this way, what comes into question is someone's got an agricultural operation, some pre-existing non-conforming agricultural operation, they run. I'd like to add a little addition to my farm.
Put a barn up.
I mean, that, that, to me, it might get into use variance.
Well, that's why, but see, isn't the question of what type of agricultural, um, they got grandfather rights in?
There's a lot, that, that gets into a whole other level of legal discussion.
Saying, so, you're gonna tread lightly there because they can be very, there can be a lot of nuisance with the wrong kind of agricultural.
No, I don't disagree.
You know?
But we get into weird issues where, you know, sometimes there's things that aren't just residential in these residential zones you wouldn't expect. Uh, but I'm fine with this code, I mean, really, we're getting most of what, use variances aren't that common. And they're also a high bar to hit. Someone to get a use variance is still like, you know, basically, to be honest, the only way they're ever approved is if the board just says, we love the project, you know. Let's not worry so much about the all beneficial use part and say it's a good project and say yes to it.
Kinda turn line eye toward you.
Yeah, i- it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a standard that if we ever wanted to say no, it doesn't matter, if we wanted to say no, you could mail the whole town. You could mail nobody, the board's gonna be in a position to say no. You know?
We just saw that go from thirty-eight to seventy-six, thirty-eight extra notices, what do they cost, they're not even certified mail anymore, it's a buck a piece.
Yeah, if I go to some zones, you'll be surprised, there's some tight areas of the RR five. Um, that if we, you know, that difference could mean an extra hundred or not. I don't mind, someone could send an extra hundred, you know, okay, what's that gonna cost you, fifty cents a piece, you're spending fifty bucks.
But Doug.
That cost person, the issue is, you imagine the average person, when they hear, what do you mean, I gotta mail to all these people? The average person is not asking for a use variance.
That, that's what I was gonna say, wasn't your concern just trying to protect those people with the shed?
Yeah, yeah.
Protect the people with the shed.
Everybody else.
So now you, now you're getting yourself into a situation, so we're gonna protect the people with the shed, and then you're gonna have. A problem with somebody wanting to put a, you know, a, an industrial complex in there.
I, I'm fine with it, I'm fine with all of it. I, I'm fine with it, I'm fine with all of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, one thousand and two thousand, like they were for those specific carve-outs, the new variant in those zones, everything else.
And that's probably what they were defending against anyway, when they said it that height.
Yeah, alright, uh, any other questions on this one?
No.
Alright. Uh, th- this is a lot of changes, and I'm gonna have to find the right way to explain it in front of the council, because I don't wanna go line by line, but the answer is the rest of this stuff. Is all just state law.
Yeah, that's, that's the answer, that's the answer right there.
Exactly, I just hope that the council doesn't, they explain state law again.
Well. State law is mandatory.
They wanna go. Uh, that'll be what I'm taking advantage of at the end of the day, I'm gonna have two hours in the joint workshop.
How thick is the state statute? No, what I'm saying is that, all these laws, is it like a big, like, in other words, given the state law with the packet. I'm looking for, so like, compare it, see, well, nah, no.
I mean, I'm hoping that we develop a level of trust, and they're like, Doug, we trust you, I don't need to read state, cuz it's not gonna read like. I'm interspersing state law into whatever we wrote. It's not easy to be like, oh, this is the exact match of language, it's like, it's the same standards, but we said it in a different way, and I, I, I'm trying to. Find the best, cleanest. Yeah, yeah, they'll trust me, especially when I say, let's all do this, and the board's like, yeah, well, you know, everyone, uh. Um, okay, this next one is definitions. Uh, what's changing here is we're removing our existing definition for an excel, accessory dwelling structure. And also accessory dwelling unit slash in-law, we used to call these things different things, whether they were attached or detached. Now it's all state law, this is the definition from state law. Also, we're changing the definition of, and I should actually say, we're adding a definition of accessory structure. This is gonna take a little bit of time for me to work, walk through in front of the council, you've heard a little bit about it. Accessory structure standards are now interwoven with accessory dwelling unit standards. The state law says, you shall give approval for accessory structures in these areas. When it comes to where can they put it, they have to live with the same standards that you could put a garage. We can't hold them to a more stringent standard than a garage, and we don't have to allow it in any different place that we would allow a garage, the state law is clear. Accessory dwelling units shall be permitted under these conditions, but that doesn't mean they put it wherever they want. That's why our accessory structure definition now has to be clear. A detached structure that is incidental and subordinate to the primary structure, such as a garage, shed, detached deck. It's not common, but sometimes someone might float a deck in their backyard.
Next to the pool.
Or a detached accessory dwelling unit, we're making it absolutely clear that it, that, that's. An attached accessory dwelling unit is a category of an accessory structure. That's allowed, and that's how these will be permitted, from a dimensional design perspective, we'll get into more of that later. Uh, building height, this is state law. Um, this is us defining building height in a different way to meet exactly state law. Um, that's all, that's an introduction to it, cuz that's changing definitions, now let's jump into the meat of it. Let's talk about ADUs first, so I'm gonna zoom past, this is accessory structures. Let's zoom past it for right now, and let's just talk about what ADU laws came, this is us removing our existing ADU law. ADU law, we used to say, you need a special use permit, and the lot has to be twenty acres if you wanna detach ADU, state law has kicked that way down. And we have not been living with that for a long time, that has been incon- inconsistent with state law for a long, long time. This is state law. These are the circumstances in which you can build an ADU, all you have to do is meet one of these, and you're allowed to build an ADU by right.
That's not what it says, I was actually gonna ask that question.
What?
ADU pro-lot is allowed by right, no residential. Uh, under any of the following circumstances or under, cuz it, it, not all three.
This is, we, we're using the state exact language, and then it does say or, or.
Okay.
So that or is considered the clause that makes it that, you don't have to meet them all. You have to meet this, or that, or that, not this and that.
And we kind of read it like, as if it's a flow chart, like, if you don't meet this first one, well, then maybe they meet the second, maybe they meet the third.
We were very careful not to diverge from what the state law language is here.
Yeah, don't do that.
So, these are the three circumstances in which you are allowed to build an ADU, it doesn't take much. You need a lot that's big enough. Or, you just need to put the ADU if your lot isn't big enough, so one thing is, first off. There's a lot of lots in Coventry that are that big or more, immediately, your ADU is allowed. There's a lot of situations where someone, if I have a small lot, I can build it within the existing footprint, here's the key distinctions. If you build, and David, you'll be interested to hear this, I've asked a couple of legal minds about this, including Andy Tights. The state law interpretation of this word right here.
Nope.
Uh, whereas it is allowed in the existing footprint of an existing. We'll, we'll probably not. This is the key word here. Existing, the truth of the matter is people have questioned, what does that word mean, I can build an ADU inside of an existing structure. The current legal interpretation, and there's not case law, this is just what people think, is existing isn't the day this code was adopted. It's existing anytime it's built.
You farm.
Build a garage, you permit it as a garage, the second it's built, you can say, I'd like to put an ADU in there now. You're allowed. So truly, this is why accessory structure standards and ADU standards go hand in hand. If you can build a garage somewhere, even if your lot is too small, you build the garage first, you convert it to an ADU second. Which is why if someone's lot is too small, and they're seeking relief to build an ADU, and they're building it where they could build a garage anywhere. We should probably work with them, because their path otherwise is to say, fine, I'll call it a garage, and then I'll come back for a building permit and convert it later.
Just let them do the ADU.
Ju- just like, consider the relief if it's needed, people are allowed to ask for relief from this code, they're allowed to say, you know, my lot's too small, can I just get relief? Um, I don't have someone with a disability, I don't wanna build it as a fake structure, I just, can I get the relief? Sure, we'll consider your relief, all of this is eligible for relief. Um, and then there's this standard, which that's state law, and it's really hard for us to really understand, like, how do you. Document someone has a disability, there's state law on what a person with a disability is. This is not revisited as often, and it's gonna be one of those things, where someone's gonna say, I have a disability, and then we'll review it, and we'll find whether we think it meets state law or not. Once they have a disability, technically, they're allowed to build an ADU on their property, even if it's small, even if it's new. Alright, then we're gonna get into these little standards, this is important. This is the size threshold state law sets. One bedroom ADU may be that big, or sixty percent of the floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is less, a two-bedroom ADU may be that big. Well, remember that number, a maximum size of an ADU is either that number. Or sixty percent, whichever is less, so really, by right, you shouldn't be able to build an ADU bigger than that. Remember that number, twelve hundred, cuz we're gonna revisit again some accessory structures. ADUs with three bedrooms or more are not allowed, you wanna build an ADU with three bedrooms or more, you got a good reason after variance, you're allowed to ask for the variance. Most ADUs, I don't think they're looking to do that, one space, one parking space per ADU unit. That's state law, the ADU shall comply, um, these, this is, the rest of this is pretty much state law verbatim. This is an interesting section of code that the state law has, it suggests that ADUs that are not allowed by right under this chapter. Which means you need a variance, shall utilize unified development review, guess what that means? If an ADU needs a variance, they're not going to the zoning board, they're going to you. That's all the code on ADUs that the state law provides, the state law does have a section of code. Um, that just discusses, there is something in state law that suggests that ADUs. Oh, here it is, that's state law. ADU shall comply with the accessory structure standards for the underlying zoning district, great. Now, let's revisit what we've got for accessory structure standards, cuz that is both how we would design a garage and permit a garage, and it's also how we design and permit an ADU.
Is there any accessory, um, structure standard mandated by state law?
No. Although, we're not really changing ours in a grand fashion.
I just wanna make sure that we don't bump up against that.
Yeah, yeah, so here's accessory structure standards. We used to have this thing that kind of started with generally, this is, you're allowed to place it in the front, blah, 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 blah. We decided, that's not generally, you're talking about the location, so, these are the dimensional regulations. The location, you're allowed, this is important code, we haven't changed this, this is exactly what we've always allowed. You put the accessory structure, if it's detached in the rear. If you put it to the side of your house, the sides, the side yard is kind of defined as the area that's in that little border that's next to your house. If you wanna put it on the side, you have to meet the normal regulatory setback. You can't put it in the front. You can ask for relief from any of those standards, we're certainly gonna get people that are already approaching us, seeking relief from this. The truth is, is that today, the state law controls. Today, the state law tells us, ADUs have to go where accessory structures, I have people that are seeking variances against this code today. They're seeking variances, because we default to state law, and we're allowed to tell people. You're seeking a variance from an accessory structure standard, I wanna build my ADU closer than ten feet to the property line, that's, that's a variance. People are confused, cuz like, I was told an ADU is allowed no matter what, you still have to comply with these dimensional.
Make it sound like you put them anyway.
Yeah, I mean, you're not allowed to drop an ADU right on your property line, there's still code to protect us there. Um, the only thing I did here is the current code up here. It, it has this weird, for example, a detached garage in the RR zone, maybe permitted in the side yard, if it meets that. I think the code is self-explanatory, but I decided to add this sentence. Because the code was a little bit silent on it, it just says, a permitted accessory structure in any residential zone shall be placed in the rear yard. Except they may be placed in the side yard in this circumstance, where they, the, the normal per, it doesn't explicitly say it's not in the front yard. It's inferred, I'd like that to be more clear, detached accessory structures shall not be placed in the front yard, as opposed to inferring it, let's make it clear.
Only with a variance.
They can do anything, anything here can be achieved with a dimensional difference. Um, height, this is where, I'm sorry, this is, we're getting into the setbacks of each particular zone. Um, this is not changed, we're just taking height out here, but this standard for ten feet from property lines has not changed. And we've always had the standard that a residential tool, garden shed can be up to five feet, that's not changing. No changes here, except we're dealing with height later, we'll catch it later. Again, dealing with height later, we're gonna catch that later. We're changing the standard from ten feet in the RR two and RR three to fifteen, that's a little bit of a recognition that these are big lots. I think an average lot that's two or three acres can give that extra five feet of room, it's a little bit of like, this would just be good code anyway, we think. And it is the, a little bit of a recognition that if people can build ADUs, maybe fifteen feet is a little better or buffer from your neighbor than ten. Being a little more conservative in the code, but not much. Then RR five. The current limitation was you shall place, the, the accessory structures shall be placed no closer than fifty feet. We think that's a little aggressive, we went from ten, ten to fifty on accessory structures.
What do you think, Glenn, five hundred feet?
Wait, that's from structures or boundary?
That's how, that's the structure from a boundary line.
Right, well. You know.
We can take your glasses off, I get nervous.
No, just saying, a lot of these lots that are two acres out there, you know, uh, for whatever reason, it's hard to find. That fifty foot, depending on if you wanna put a garage, it is hard to find.
Well, that is non-conforming, wouldn't you have to go.
Thirty-five is not unreasonable.
Wouldn't you have to go for a refund anyway?
Right.
Right.
If the lot is smaller, then they get some reduction.
Yeah. You never get that number, though, huh? Is that hard to find, I couldn't find that anywhere.
Were you talking about the state law?
Yeah, yeah, the reduction, yeah.
I'll put it to you this way, there's a whole conversation around that, the state law has already changed on it. You know how we were playing with proportional reduction?
Yes.
You got a lot that's half the size, you go with half the setback, that's already changed.
Right.
Now there's a new rule. If your lot is too small for the zone, you look at the zoning table, and you say, where would this lot conform?
Right.
It doesn't matter if it's a commercial zone or residential zone, you find where the lot would conform, and that's where you get to apply the standards. It's a little wonky, it's a little wonky.
So if you have a twenty thousand square foot lot in the west end of RR five. The RR twenty sand, if it's setbacks on the side.
Correct.
You use the RR two if you have two acres.
Uh, yeah, if you have two acres, you're using RR two, so that means, let's say you're in the RR five district. But you're, you're a lot smaller than an RR five.
Right.
Let's just say it's just a little bit smaller. Well, you're non-conforming for RR five, you go down to RR three. Then suddenly, this thirty-five feet goes fifteen, but to be honest, if you, you know. That's the code, and we don't wanna make this number so large that an average RR two and RR three lot is now suddenly constrained. We kinda have to live with the idea that if it's a substandard lot of record, they're gonna get reductions one way or the other. And we just have to be reasonable about it, there's a chance that this RR five lot is just barely two acre. Well, when they're getting fifteen, there's also a chance this RR five lot is literally just a hair under five acres.
Right, but at least, at least with these smaller lots, now that you're getting fifteen, because you're saying thirty-five.
Correct, now you kinda understand why we went from ten to fifteen, it's like, we don't wanna make it hard.
Right.
We want a little more.
What about the one-acre lot, it's a lot five, it's in a cluster.
If it's a one-acre lot, you're not gonna like the answer.
That's what I mean.
RR twenty?
That's a clock.
No, you take the proportion of the statute on, you take the, whatever the ratio is of your undersized lot. Let's, let's assume you're one-third the size of a lot. And you're supposed to have fifteen, you only need five feet.
One acre lot.
I'm giving that.
Well, it's that first page. It's this, you're talking about the first page, right, well, what do you want?
And, and race.
Setbacks? Setbacks first page.
The percentage of the thirty-five feet is both and just maintaining.
Okay, if you want accessories, start, yeah, there.
So this is worth revisiting, and we didn't wanna do a wholesale change. This is gonna be the, the issue that we have to contend with, is that it doesn't stay residential to residential. If you have a residential lot, that, let's say it finds itself at, uh, about a little over an acre. You know what you defer to? The GB one zone, the general business one zone, and guess what the general business one zone says, is they're ten feet. But it's an acre. Is it, is it worth us changing the full GB one zone standards for those couple of lots that might be right at about an acre, they're under two?
Wanna put a shed.
So they missed the fifteen-foot setback, because they're just under two, now they're going to ten feet, this isn't that big of a difference.
And we're only talking about accessory structures?
That's correct, yeah, and the truth is, that, that works, that, that move down the chain of zoning works for setbacks for principal or accessory, but it works for both. So you have to understand this gradation, and you have to understand that certain residential lots will be held to a commercial. Accessory structure or principal structure setback, that's state law. Uh, Alex and I, and Alex is leading this effort, are really reviewing, the biggest issue is actually not accessory, it's. Um, principal structures or substandard lots of record in the RR twenty, you got an RR twenty lot, let's just say it's just a hair under. They default to the GB standards. I wanna show you that the general business standards, if it's a principal structure, ten feet across the board. RR twenty standards, the front setback's thirty-five feet.
Yeah.
If your RR twenty lot is a hair underneath twenty thousand, instead of a thirty-five foot front setback, you get ten. Alex and I are trying to figure out, that's state law, that exists. We're trying to figure out if there should be a local code change to help address that. The truth is, is we're trying to do some research to figure out, how big is the problem, how many lots in RR twenty, or what sizes? Uh, they would either default to this zone, and RR twenty that's a hair under defaults to that zone, if they're smaller than that. Sorry, they default to that zone. There's lots of ways we could solve it, we could up the ante on our general business, but then we're creating weird non-conformities in the general.
Well, you could also put non-conforming lots in twenty thousand that fall between five thousand feet. And nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine square feet, these will be the setbacks, and just make it part of the RR twenty zone.
We could create a new district, and we could call it the, whatever we want.
Well, it's not a new district, what you're saying is it, buh, buh, buh. Lots in the RR twenty zone. That are between five thousand square feet and nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine square feet. The setback shall be as follows.
That's conflicting state law, state law would say, you can't do an end around us.
Yeah.
What we could do is, we could create a new residential zone in an area of the town where the lots are already small. We could say, that's the new lot minimum size, and we're literally creating a zone where we don't expect development, it just represents the lots, but then we create dimensional standards for that zone. There's tricks about this, the truth is, we don't have the right trick yet, it needs a little more study, we're living with it for now.
Doug, I, I, I'm just a little confused between the, the, the reduction. Zone when you have an undersized, what about the statute about proportional?
That comes, it comes into effect only when the, um, the lot size is smaller than the smallest.
Yeah.
By right area that you've got, so you would have to be like seven thousand four hundred ninety-nine square feet and smaller, that's when proportionality comes in.
I thought, I thought on the side, pre-existing lots of, uh, pre-existing non-conforming lots of, of record. Had a ratio, um, proportion.
I thought so too, the state changed that law this summer, it caught, it took me a little while to catch up to it, and I was big. It caught, it took me a little while to catch up to it and I was big time surprised when I realized. That, um, okay, so it is this, it's the step down to the next zoning. And until, and then the state law says, until you get to a lot that's so small that it's smaller. Than the smaller zone, which took, for Coventry, I mean, that's a tight lot.
Then you're back to the proportional.
That's state law now.
So I, I, I missed that.
And the, the, the problem is, is the state law doesn't read as though you stay with like zones. Residential goes to residential zones. Commercial, you just jump back. There could be a big drop from a residential to a commercial for setback.
This might be better.
In some ways it's better, in some ways. An RR twenty lot that's just under RR twenty. Where if it was just under RR twenty before, I mean, you get ninety-five percent. GB one?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand. But the truth is that both of these zones, they're the smallest zones. If you're RR twenty. You're the smallest zone except for these two. These are the two smallest zones we have in town. So if you're RR twenty and you're below RR twenty. One way or the other, whether you're fifteen thousand or you're a little below fifteen thousand, you're defaulting to these.
Well, yeah, the other way to say it is, as soon as you dip one foot below twenty thousand, you go from thirty-five.
Why are your setbacks that small in a commercial area like that?
They have been.
Why can't you increase those?
It's possible, that we probably, that would need study cuz now we have to understand how many non-conforming commercial structures do we create? By taking a ten-foot setback and making it thirty. And it's like, oh, we made a lot, but also. The goal of commercial districts is different. It's not like we want everything pushed from the street. Sometimes you wanna invite the, the building to the street and create a street front. It, it's a good question, David. There's one way to solve this.
How much, how much on? How much, how much? How much RR twenty land zone, uh, how many RR twenty lots are there in the, in the town? Is that a significant number lot that is gonna run through this whole?
So, yeah, we've had, uh.
All the orange, which doesn't look like much, but when you realize the size of the lots compared to the size of the other zones. It's about the population. All these lots. There's probably.
We've had, well, so we had our consultants start to take a look with what data we have available. It's not. A hundred percent complete in the backend of this, but, um. Of what they had, like sixty percent are below twenty. So it's like more often than not, you're gonna run into this situation.
So what is the, what's the, the number of lots that are in the GB?
That they get the GB?
That are currently zoned general business, you're saying?
Right, because this defaults to GB. And if you don't increase the setbacks on the GB. Then.
Well, it's that, either that or depending on the size and we don't know how many of them are smaller than fifty.
You're trying to understand the scale of the problem. If, if, if the bigger problem is protect your residential zones cuz there's not that many GBs, there's prob, there's a number of GBs. That's Tyok. So if we change GB rules, we're changing Tyok. If we don't change GB zones, we're giving RR twenty lots this huge ability to decrease.
Right, but if you, if you shake, you're saying change Tyok, all the existing Tyok is fine. And I bet you most of that's built up.
You might not be wrong, David. The, the, the real answer is that we don't have a solution. Alex and I agree, this is a problem that needs a solution. We don't have the solution yet and the truth is, we wanted to do a GIS analysis to understand the scales of the problem. We don't have a GIS that tells us how many GB lots we have right now.
Do you have an RR one zone? Create an RR one zone.
No, what we really would be heading for is we're, we would need to consider creating, um, an RR sixteen. And an RR eight. Because we wanna hit zones that are right above. Those gen, but are we ready to create a whole new RR fifteen, RR sixteen and RR eight? No, that needs more study before we do that. The answer, the, the quick answer is that this is a good discussion to have. I don't wanna have this in front of the council cuz it's entirely distracting and this is a side quest. The truth is that, the only reason I brought this up is so that you understood that if there's, someone asks the question, what if there's a non-conforming lot? The truth is, the non-conforming accessory structure still default. There's not a big conflict there. As we re, as we review and relate our accessory structure standards, there's not a need to change it. Because it has a natural gradation down. There's not a huge drop where there's a problem. There is for principal structures, but that's a problem for another day.
Yeah, but the question is really when you, the, the, just a thought, just to follow it up. How many people are gonna have a lot that's nineteen thousand square feet and wanna put it ten feet to the line? Cuz this is residential, they're gonna wanna have a nice house, right?
I mean, they want a nice house, but sometimes people don't care what, what the neighbors look like.
Because if they can get the full-size building up, then it's gonna be. Two-family with an accessory dwelling unit right after they.
Everyone that's thinking about this is already thinking of the loopholes, the issues. What's the reasonability? What's the advantages, disadvantages? It needs more study before we have the best solution.
Because back to the RR five, somebody could put a twelve hundred, a twelve hundred accessory drilling unit detached fifteen feet from the property line now. So now instead of having what, what it was designed for, RR five or RR two, we got two acres, they can put a fifteen feet and it's a whole of hours. Fifteen foot from the property line because it's gonna be proportion to the, to it. That's what I'm saying. Why do we get rid of these square footage?
Now, when you play a whole other house, let's think about what a whole other house looks like. Would it be in the side setback? Well, if it's in the side setback, they have to meet the regular district regulation. So now we're not worried about the fifteen feet. If it's in the rear. It's like, it's not gonna look like a whole other house. If you have to hide the house behind the house, it certainly looks accessory subordinate. When you put it in the side yard, now you have to meet those side setbacks.
Which is fifteen feet if you.
No, the side setback, if you're in the side yard, you have to meet the side setback of the principal structure standards. That's what our code says today. We've always held that code. If you put an accessory structure, garage or anything in the rear yard, we're kinda like, you're hiding it. We'll live with it. You know, you can be close to your property lines as long as it's back there. Once you bring it to the front, it starts to look like, wait, now we've got two things next to each other. The scale and the massing of these things are starting to come into conflict. But you have to be farther away from your, your boundaries then. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I think that's about how I looked at it in this, in this writing.
But keep in mind, I mean, no, the, the, the language that, that you're thinking of is.
Fifteen feet.
This language.
RR two, right there, go down, nope. Go right there, see the fifteen feet with the property line?
But if you're in the side yard, you default to this language. The detached accessory structure shall be placed in the rear yard except that detached accessory structures may be placed in the side yard where the side yard setback requirement for the principal structure can be maintained. That's that dominant thing that says if you wanna bring it close enough next to the house, you gotta give me the bigger setback now. We've always had that.
Which of the RR five zone is.
Well, uh, well, if it, let's say it defaults. Now you're going to the principal structure setback in an RR two. Which is gonna be certainly more than fifteen feet.
In DNC saying that's only, that that ten, it's only good for the, for the back.
A, in the principal structure setback and let's just say an RR two. Will be fifty feet. So keep in mind, when you bring it to the side, let's say I got an RR five lot. I wanna build an accessory dwelling unit. I wanna put it next to my house.
So that house has to have at least a, a seventy-five feet, so to speak. To get away with it. I understand.
Going back to that writing, why wouldn't you just be clear and say? What, that you get those benefits only in the rear yard? Why aren't these just limited to the rear yard? If that's what you're telling me it means. You're telling me this, this is how you get protected from the side yard. And these apply to rear. Well, why don't we just say that? How come we don't say it? How come that, how come B and C don't say it applies to the rear yard?
I think the idea is that this is the language our code has always used, this approach. Um, you're right, I could say.
Must be placed in.
Well, no, actually, I would say differently. There's a side yard setback in the rear yard area.
Yeah, but I'm talking about, you, you, what I, am I misunderstanding you that you can be ten feet to the rear property line, but you have to be fifty feet from the side?
No, no, no.
No, if your structure's behind the house, you can go with the shorter. If you're, if you're next to the house, it's the higher.
This is the line, front yard, backyard. This is the side yard. If you're in the backyard, you can be ten feet from the side. If you're in the side yard. See what I'm seeing? So.
Or you can go for a variant.
Or go for a variance. There's plenty of reasons why variance might be appropriate, but also plenty of reasons why it's not, which is why you gotta ask.
Right, so even in the backyard, they can build a twelve, uh, twelve hundred square foot accessory drilling unit, ten. That's what I'm saying. Now you got another house on your.
The trick is that I, so think about, I don't like that. I wanted a bigger difference. We're gonna get a lot of variances for garages. Because we have to hold them to the same standard. We could be really conservative with where we allow garages and then we're gonna get a lot of variance.
You get a nice dry lot out in the RR five zone now, you just put up a second building right on.
So you're saying you can even do it on, on developments now?
Approach you with a subdivision. That's allowed.
Did you hear that, Rick? You could, you could put a thirty-nine lot development in and have an.
That's allowed. It doesn't count against their density.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be the way they're gonna make money. So the only way you're gonna stop them, they do. From doing.
They will say this though.
Can't prohibit long-term.
We don't really have a big Airbnb influencer.
Basically, everybody would be renting it out.
Most of the people that are trying to build ADUs are building them for family members. But the truth is that, there's nothing in the state law that prohibits you from renting them out. There's nothing that says it has to be a family.
Now, you know, historically. ADUs type structures are in the front of the eye.
I didn't know that.
Well, think of it, look, look at, go look at every Newport mansion, every. All those carriage houses. That's it. All those, all those carriage houses are essentially ADUs. You know, they lived in there.
So I'm happy to stay here till midnight, for those that don't. Let's move on to the next. Height. Um, this is a change that we're making to add a height allowance. The reason is, if you look up what, what the height restriction wasn't in RR twenty. It was inappropriately low. The height restriction was fifteen feet. Or the height of the principal structure, whichever is lower. We had a lot of people that were saying fifteen feet is not reasonable even for a garage.
Ranchers higher than fifteen feet.
So we thought, and also we were treating height differently across all zones. Uh, height in the RR two was nineteen feet, height in the RR five was twenty-two feet. We thought, one, and keep in mind, it's this whichever is lower. You could have a twenty-five foot principal structure. And you can't build your, a garage at greater than fifteen feet. It's whichever is lower, fifteen feet or the principal structure. We thought, let's allow twenty-five feet or the principal structure, whichever is lower. That way, if your principal structure is, let's say it's at thirty feet. You're allowed to build up to twenty-five. It's whichever is lower, twenty-five feet of the principal structure. If your principal structure is down here at. Eighteen. Then the accessory structure can be eighteen feet. The idea was that fifteen feet was too low. And it should be allowed to move up and down with the height of the principal structure, but we shouldn't set that cap at fifteen feet. Twenty-five feet is the right number. And also, we didn't see a reason why the gradation of zones needed to affect height that much. Think setback distance is reasonable, the lots are bigger, height to us seemed like, let's call that even across the board. That was our take on it.
I agree.
Do you guys have thoughts on that? That's not, that's not a nothing thing. We are changing height. Um, across the board.
I agree.
I think that this piece of it, that the, um, it's whichever is lower, so if the principal structure.
It's all about the principal's structure.
I don't mind if someone matches the height of their principal structure. I don't want them to have to force them.
And you can add design standards to that too.
Yeah, but we've got a little bit of standards in here. Okay, remember I told you to remember this number? Floor area, the maximum floor area of a detached accessory structure. Shall be that. You know why we're doing that? It will limit garages. But it avoids someone playing the game of, I'd like to build a mini mansion ADU. You know how you do that? You just build a garage and the second it's built, you convert it to an ADU. So that's why we're matching that number to the maximum number you can achieve for an ADU. Also, this is, this is pretty big for a garage. This is a three-bay garage easily.
Yeah, it's huge. But now you're saying that in RR five, you can put that fifteen feet from the property line that's in the backyard.
The current code doesn't have, the current code does not have a size limitation on accessory structures. Right now, you can build a two-acre accessory structure. We think a limitation is appropriate and we're matching ADU because we actually can't go lower. I can't tell someone their accessory structure has to be lower. I, I guess I could say garage, you know, aside from ADUs, garages can be a max this. Frankly, I think that that's not. That's a, that's a fine area. We actually do have people that want big garages in Coventry. They like to store their cars. They like to play with their cars.
Well, I got a neighbor wants to put a lift in. Fifteen feet ain't gonna cut it.
So the, the height is one, this is the other floor area. That's a now a maximum floor area of an accessory structure. Doesn't matter what it is. Design. Now we're getting into an area where I wanna make sure your, your attention's on it. Detached accessory structures, this isn't just ADUs. Shall be generally, shall generally be designed to maintain the architectural appearance and character of the principal structure. Now we're getting into something where I want you to be aware that this is double-edged. I'm looking at both garages and, and dwellings. Let's just say, here's your dwelling. Right? You wanna build an ADU, you wanna build the ADU in the side yard. Let's just say you build your ADU. To do exactly that. It looks like a duplex to me. The idea here is that whether this is a garage or an ADU. We don't want it to take away from the character of the principal. Structure. It should be ancillary and subordinate to. The principal structure. I don't mind it if it's up next to it, but it better not look like it's trying to look like a duplex. It needs to generally maintain and respect the idea that there's a principal structure and there's an accessory. This is interpretable code. This is great territory. David's probably looking at this and saying, I could slice this and dice this a million ways.
I was just gonna say, what did you just say? You just said substandard and ancillary.
Subordinate and ancillary, which is a standard language that most accessory structures have. In fact, I think it's in this.
Well, I was gonna say.
That doesn't say that. Should be the, the example you didn't want, which was two duplexes side by side.
What do you mean?
That's what that sounded like. It has to be the same.
No, no, no. I, accessory structures shall generally be incidental and subordinate to the primary use structure. That's a common, uh, language that's used throughout the state for what the purpose of.
Right, so go back to that other paragraph that we were just looking at. Why don't you say it again?
No, we can.
Yeah, cuz I think those, those, those two statements are.
This was meant to, um, it's not meant to say we want you to create the accessory structure in a way that matches it. It was to maintain the architectural appearance and character of the.
You add that in there again, I think I agree.
Okay, I don't mind that. That's a good catch.
Just, just that right there. Actually. I, I host the whole thing. And then they're gonna get the rest of the same language from that other page. Again, for the sake of this discussion.
To the primary use of such structure.
Right. And that's gonna help you, won't it? Maybe not.
I, I mean, I don't mind it. I mean, what I'm getting at here is I wanna be able to talk about. I wanna be able to talk about. Um, there is, in my opinion, inappropriate design of these things.
Right, right.
Um, and inappropriate design is where, you know, like, hey, you know, I wanna do an ADU and it's gonna kinda slightly protrude in the front yard. Okay, you need a variance there. And I wanna make it bigger than the front. Well, then we got variances there and I will, you know, like, but then you get a version like. It really is trying to respect that the primary structure should be the main, uh, appearance, the main. Character-defining element. We shouldn't allow an accessory structure to redefine the character, to make something look like a duplex where it shouldn't look like a duplex. There's lots of reasons and areas where that might happen. Um, you get all kinds of wacky situations. So this is code that's meant to help protect us. It is wildly interpretable code. This is not a measurable thing. It's gonna come down to staff having to interpret this in the correct way and the board, if you get variances, interpreting it in the correct way. It gives us an ability to at least have the conversation with an applicant. An applicant might even claim, you know what, I, I don't think, uh, I have to be held to that standard. Well, I mean, we could say, well, you can make your case here. And maybe we'll be reasonable with you. And maybe you get out of here with a decent-looking designer. Maybe you build an ADU and you want it to look next to the side and we say, well, we want you to design it in a way that it will look. And we say, well, we want you to design it in a way that it will look still subordinate. You can't tell me how to design my ADU.
Well, the code tells us we can.
So, and again, this is code for not accessory dwelling units, all accessory structures, because we can't hold ADUs to a different standard than accessory structures. John, what do you think about this? You have to live with this stuff too.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I do think it protects against certain instances where. I, I'm trying to think, there could be a situation where maybe somebody wants to take advantage of a height situation. Yeah, if they wanna give it a flat roof. Uh, maybe they wanna use materials like a steel building or something like that, so I think protects against certain instances where people wanna try to.
Yeah.
Shoot horn as much in as they can.
Roof design is a good point.
Right.
Um, you could design buildings with bad roof design and really detract from the appearance.
That's what I thought we were gonna do.
Yeah, or like, yeah, this just doesn't, this doesn't happen. But, you know, and then keep in mind, you'll see this later, actually, I'll just jump to it right now cuz we're having the conversation. Here's attached structures. Honestly, this is a silly section, it's really just meant to be like an attached accessory garage or accessory dwelling unit. An accessory garage or accessory dwelling, it attached to the principal structure becomes part of the principal structure. We're kind of saying like, okay, that's kind of. You know, hit me with the, hit me over the head with an obvious statement. Except some people, it's not that obvious. If you have an attached ADU, they may say, no, 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 I can, I can put the ADU in front of the house. I can make this wild addition that looks like I'm building an A, this is where I say. Someone could build an ADU that looks like that. That looks like a duplex. This language comes up again. I can have that insubordinate and it's, uh, incidental subordinate language here and all, and I'll, I'll wordsmith that in later, Alex.
I saw this and I know you can go. Or I won't make it up, but let's say you have a ranch house that looks like this. So now on the side. You wanna. Put something with maybe a little different facade.
Yeah.
And have this protrude ten feet to the front and then put a porch on so that you can put a door on the side. That extends into the front, but you could go for a variance.
You could go for variance. Now, this is new code, uh, wait, where did I have it? Okay, this.
That.
John, I'm curious to pick John Studley's brain about this. We've never had code that told anybody that you can't put the accessory portion of your primary dwelling in front. We allow snout houses. Snout houses, if you have a narrow lot, the garage is way in front, the door might be halfway back, it's not generally a great look. Um, we've never had code that ever told anyone an attached garage had to be behind the principal structure. Anytime someone wants to build a garage, even if it protrudes a couple feet in front of the house, they need to get a variance. But thi- this again, what if someone wants to build in addition to their house? They're within their setback area. This isn't like a setback issue, they're just building in addition to their house in the front yard, but it's an ADU. And it starts to give a new front door. It starts to look like, man, this house is looking really weird now. That's why that code, this, the accessory portion of the principal structure shall not extend in front of the principal dwelling.
I, I, um.
And I might have to re, this might need some rewording.
You, you might have to separate the accessory garage versus an accessory dwelling because. What bothers me is when you say it becomes part of the principles, principal structure, so I create a accessory. Garage with accessory unit, you say it's part of the principal structure and I want ADU.
Yeah.
But you should be. It should say ADU always, in other words, you get my point theoretically, you could, you could create an accessory garage.
It'd be like, you delete, like, becomes part of this principal structure and therefore, so it just reads as. Attached to the principal structure must meet the yard requirements.
That's what I think. I, I, I don't think it, right. See, if this met the front setback and you met your side setback, putting this on the end of the house.
Where's your front?
The front of the house now is here, on the front of this, you would just have two windows, but you could put a porch all the way along.
That's how I got around.
Go in, and go in the side and you could, you could have your apartment here, it would look perfect.
Rip that in. My house, that's my garage, it sticks out in front of my house, I got around it by putting a, oh, porch on the front.
Now, there, I think that it's fair to say that we could define in this code and this section. That there are portions of principal structures that have accessory components that might even be a deck. Now, it's also, I don't wanna create it so that a deck in front of a, a front door is not allowed. A lot of people have decks in front of their front doors. But the, we have to, yeah, yeah, a porch. We have to be thoughtful about this. I'm attempting something here and this probably needs a little more work and I probably will work it out. I'll think it through with Alex, I'll think it through with David, the next time you see it, it might be reworked. I'm trying a few things here. I think the intent here, you kind of understand the intent and maybe we need to work through the, the, the language on how we describe. If the accessory portion of the structure becomes part of the principal structure, how do we still call it something different? And how do we make sure we don't exclude porches from being in front of houses? But we exclude a massive ADU from being in front of the house. Does that all make sense? We'll think it through, we'll wordsmith that.
Right, I'll be looking at my house.
We'll take that part through. When you see materials on February four.
Doesn't have to comply.
If you have a concern, let me know, don't send it to the whole group. The point of February four. And I'd almost rather you guys not be adding questions, but be helping.
And confusion sets in.
So let's put design aside for a second cuz that might need some work. Let's work on lot coverage, this is easy, lot coverage shall comply with the lot coverage requirements of the underlying zoning, that's allowed. State law allows that. I mean, someone wants to build an ADU, but they paved everything in their house, they might need a variance. Get your variance. Um, accessory structures, this is a little, this has always existed in our code and it talks about, uh, accessory structures. Incidental, incidental subordinate to farming. We basically give them, um, this ability to reach up to thirty five feet in height. Which I have, I didn't wanna change. This is probably not a common issue. Someone's got a barn, they're using it for a barn, they want thirty five feet, okay, that's fine. We had to allow this because we used to have this language and not for habitation. Well, unfortunately, state law tells us, you're not allowed to take any structure and tell someone that it can't be converted to an ADU. So we now, instead of saying not for habitation, we say not for habitable living areas, except. To allow for the development of ADUs in compliance with the provisions of that section of code. Honestly, that's just us making sure that there's not a section of code that is in conflict with state law. That all makes sense? I think we just covered a good chunk of that. And then Alex, this is, is this where, um, our old friend live workspaces goes?
I know. Go up a little bit.
Yeah.
There it is, yeah.
Honestly, I'm not sure if I like this at all. Um, our, our consultant offered this to us. It offers this concept of a live work unit. Um, right now, they're saying, this is, this is straight from the consultant and I, and I did, I was close to just Xing this. It says in this zone particularly, you're allowed to basically use your house for a live work unit. Uh, and it gives these standards, which are standards that I think other communities have had, this is probably more of a common thing you might see in more urban communities. The problem with what we have here in Coventry is that people don't use their more rural residential units. For like a little office for their architectural studio, they use it for woodlots. And they use it to, um, do things like chop a lot of wood in their backyard and then sell the wood.
Yeah.
Uh, we're talking about more trucking activity. We have some uses right now where people are on the verge of a use violation because they're basically doing this. To include this code is probably, is not quite the right place.
Doing anything you want.
Um, this is, this is where they, they put some language here, permitted uses may include professional services, art studios, this is the vision, home based retail. This, I'm not, I don't love this section of code, I didn't ax it cuz I wanted you to have a chance to see it and if you saw value in it. Um, our consultant took some time to draw it up. This is within the guise of, hey, this isn't a terrible idea. I almost axed it before you even saw it. I'm just curious to get your reaction. They could, they could, they could approach any of these types of things. In a residential setting. I don't love it. But, let me take my opinion out. Do you guys see value in this?
No. No. Yeah, no.
In other words, somebody wanted to, to run this out of their house with maybe one other employee, something like that, but anything that's gonna require. Um, customers.
And notice everybody within a thousand feet.
There's a process, probably not a likely accessory. There's nothing that stops someone from doing a little of their business work at their house. Let's say you're an architect. You don't have a lot of customers, you're just doing some work in your house. You can list your address as your business mailing address. So far, there's not a use violation. There's a use violation when I see a bunch of cars pull up and there's customers showing up every day. The activity on the site dictates the use variance. I, I personally am good if we ax it unless someone says. Great, thank you.
You know, down the road, what we need to address is those storage units because. You can't put a shed in your front yard, but you can put a storage unit and leave it there forever.
Oh, you're talking about the. Those, those are violations of.
Yeah, we, we gotta.
If he, well, when we say start enforcing it, we react to where someone.
So you should have to come get a permit to put it in your yard.
Again, it's a violation. The idea is that the town doesn't have the staff. If the neighbors think it looks so bad, they don't like it, someone's gonna call the town. I live in a world where everyone calls the town when they don't like something, so I'm used to that. But sometimes it's like, we don't go out looking for the issues cuz we don't have the staff for it. They'd be driving around all day. We wouldn't be able to get work done.
If somebody's seen it, couldn't you just, you give them a citation? Cease to assist or something?
Somebody don't have. Uh, no, it's, it's, it was the first step would be, it's the first step towards a notice of, it's a zoning violation.
But I mean, somebody doesn't have to call, you could drive by and see it.
Yeah, he can do it.
Yeah, it's just there everywhere.
No, I know.
That's for another day.
We'll, we'll hire John Studley on a part-time basis to come back and do that for us. John, you could be our proactive zoning coordinator.
You're gonna have people lined up.
You want someone that doesn't want the job, that's how you know, John, you want that job? That's how you know he's right for it.
You can't, you can't live in this thing.
Moving along. It is eight fifty three and the next thing I wanna talk about is the biggest thing. So we, if we keep it tight and focused, we could shoot to get out of here in the next thirty minutes. You guys wanna do that?
I gotta get out of here.
Well, we need to talk about this cuz I don't wanna hear it for the first time on February fourth, so let's blast through it.
Yeah, yeah, that's the one I was going by, would have, cuz everything permitted like in RR five, but with, it contradicts that last page. You know? Well, that page you just looked at, you wanna ax. When I was looking at it, oh, it's all not.
Yeah, yeah, correct. The black side left.
Yeah.
Get next. Alright, why don't I start with a high level discussion and then if you guys, did anyone take the time to go through this and have like their own ideas and markups? Cuz maybe instead of me starting, I'll hear from you, but this is all I'm gonna say about it. Um, you guys recall about a year ago or a little more than that, we shut down special use permits.
Yep.
Most of that was shutting down businesses or industrial uses in business and industrial zones. The concept is we're bringing them back, we're not bringing them back with special use permits, you guys have heard it from me, that's not a good tool, you don't need to hear that spiel again. We're bringing it back as a permitted use. This is the first cut of that work effort. There are uses that I think we should bring back, like gasoline stations. Like maybe even auto repair places that I think need a little more thought before we just turn them on allowed by right in every zone. Maybe some of these uses need to have like a minimum distance of a hundred feet to residential. I can see gas stations being appropriate, allowed by right, that that is standard to it. This is the stuff that we saw, we just as simple as turn it from a no to a yes. Because this use isn't that big of a nuisance compared to everything else we allow in the zone. The most of the effort here is that we took the yeses, we turned them to no, we're turning the right ones back to yeses. We, we did this, we also realized that our industrial zones were not allowing regular business activities in the first place. Our industrial zones were allowing manufacturing, heavier industrial uses, but they weren't allowing retail. They weren't allowing general services and we thought the vision for industrial zones is different than that was maybe fifty years ago. This code was created forty years ago and we probably haven't changed it since then. We don't get big factories anymore. Industrial zones are more of a hot pot where we should be open to a lot of different kinds of businesses. A lot of existing buildings, awkward buildings, older buildings, and we need to be able to fill those buildings with uses. And I don't think retail is more intensive than, um, industrial manufacturing uses. But what you're seeing here is an effort to turn business and industrial uses back on in our business and industrial zones. With business zones, we did not turn a lot of industrial zone, industrial uses on there. We left the business zones to be mostly the business uses. The truth is manufacturing is not coming, we're not getting factories. Your woodworking shop is likely an artisan who wants a small space to do handcrafted woodwork. That's now wood manufacturing. We're not getting a hundred foot and, or a hundred employee, a factory developing wood stuff. We're getting artisan stuff. That's just, that's just where our industrial, uh, economy is right now. And we have to be open to allowing zones to fit different needs. So that's the big story. Um, underneath that story, there's lots of examples of why did you say yes here and not there? Why don't I allow you guys the floor, if you look through it and you have a thought, let's, let's hear from you guys.
Alright, we are, Rick and I are set.
Yeah.
Yeah. All I'm looking at is the dark piece where you struck out the N, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't.
There's a few where, actually what you're looking at mostly is its ends. That's breaking out, can turn to a peak. There were a few examples where we turned something that was allowed to not because we were like, wait a minute. Why are we allowing that heavy use in the village mainstream commercial, but we're not in the business zones? Let's turn that one off. There was a few we got back.
Do you have, how many ends to P?
Which one did you open? No, open the other one.
Do you know the count?
That one.
Count, thank you.
What, I know her. It's getting late.
It's getting late. Do you know the count?
Oh, there's. Oh, there's a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Sorry, David.
That, well, that's, that's more. But they're not, and all the ones I saw so far are not unreasonable.
So, we had an effort. Uh, this effort took place many, many months ago, but after we shut down special use permits, we, we established a tax task force. It had a consultant that had planning staff, it had a couple of members of this board. It had Kevin McGee, and we tried to fill ourselves with institutional knowledge of guys, you know, let's make sure we're not misstepping here. This, this work product is basically the effort of that task force. And group thinking, where is it just a clear cut obvious, let's just turn this business use on. Why are we afraid of that? If we're allowing this heavier thing, why are we afraid of the lighter? Um. Now, this is one where I can't picture how I'm gonna get through a council conversation in two hours, where I get everything we already listed. End this, but I, I'd love not to miss this. I'd love to get through this. And the best step I have is to make sure you guys don't have questions or issues, and if you don't, then at least we can try to get through with the council. And S is a special use permit. You guys, there's, there was like one that, there was a remnant one, I forgot, I never, I didn't catch. There was like one S I found.
Or you could let them, I mean, we've seen this, Rick and I, or you could let them take it home and if they have a problem.
The, the.
This was, this was their Christmas.
The only thing, we already had it. The only thing, um, that's, I, it's not concerning, my memory's just not that good. I, I'm assuming that the ends that you struck out were the ones that used to be S's and we're not just going from N to P in one shot. Or are there some cases from our discussion earlier with like, no, you guys said at the meeting, you didn't have an issue going from.
That is correct. Most of the cases where it wasn't an S. And it was always an N and we're going to a P, were cases where it was industrial uses where we didn't allow businesses.
We'll just tell, let me just share this one thing, and I don't know if you remember this, Ron, I can't remember if it was the Cumberland Farms. Or the Dunkin Donuts or the, for the Cowboys. But there were people that owned the industrial properties in the back. That were complaining that it's not a compatible use, that they're in there doing their industrial thing. And now they're getting all these cars going through there cuz we converted it either for various developments or retail. So that's the only concern I see because we've now made it very, I mean, you can put a supermarket in an industrial zone. Well, that draws, you know, uh, an element, families, people with small children. And here they are traipsing and we don't know what's going on right next door. But an element, families, people with small children, and here they are traipsing and we don't know what's going on right next door. And a kid wanders off, gets hurt, or there's equipment or of that. That's the only, it's the compatibility.
Yeah.
It's not whether or not it's more intense use or not a more intense use, and that's just. A statement. I'm not opposed to any of this, but I'm just saying from a planning perspective, sometimes that's the hat I put on and I say. We don't have that big industrial places.
I don't, I hear what you're saying, which is that the vision for industrial was different than customer facing.
I mean, look what happened on Reservoir Road, right?
But.
We had the we had the lumber operation with the tumbler or the rumble and Confreeda's next door that was operating the retail. Fortunately, there wasn't any agitator there. It was the residential across the street, but. The question that came, are those compatible uses?
So here's a good example.
That is a good example.
And to what happened?
Is there is um anything that goes in any um dust that goes in the air from that that activity?
Um.
That if I had an open air market like Confreeda's, they would.
Well, they'll say, don't go there. They'll say, well, we're not, it's allowed, but they're gonna say, well, I'm not gonna put my business there because there's an industrial use next door. But the more concerning thing is if it's a vacant industrial lot. And you put your supermarket there and the next guy comes in and says, I wanna open up. Who knows, a landscape business or something and there's stuff blowing around or.
Yeah, so here's a good example. What's the vision for industrial zones that's different than the vision for our commercial zone? Sometimes they're right up next to each other. This is Ty Oak and Reservoir. It's business here, and then you see the color differentiation where it's a light purple on these lots here.
Yeah.
It's hard to see that color.
Yeah.
I mean, at the end of the day, if we want, do we want these properties to have a much more limited and specific scope where they're only industrial and manufacturing uses? And the business uses can't go here, or are we willing to say business might be appropriate here? Now, the same question exists wherever we go. Now here, you're gonna see not far from where we are right now, it's largely industrial zoning around us, so.
Can I just ask one question?
Yep.
If the, we went after this to stop the special use permit problem.
Correct.
Why do we have to wrestle with the ends? To make them P's now?
We don't have to, but the answer to the question is that when we were going through the use table, we felt as though.
But hold on, I thought we were gonna go to the S's and say, should we make them a P or an N? Not go to the ends.
Well, no, they went to.
Were former.
They're already ends.
They were former S's.
That's all of the ones we're talking about, all S's.
Well.
That's my.
So this is the important distinction. The majority of uses we're talking about that you see is going from an N to a P were S's.
Okay.
Some of them were not.
Okay.
The majority that were not. The task force that we established said, we're here to make common sense and reasonable recommendations. And we think that allowing businesses and industrial was a bit of a misstep in the first place. Now, it had always been off.
No, but that should have been step three, Doug.
I'm fine with that.
You know what I'm saying? But to me, that's step three because we we shut down the special use permits to keep people from filing the applications. And we're us getting caught out flat footed, right? So if we deal with the S's, then we solve that problem.
The, if you look at where we're going with it.
It makes sense, okay.
I'll put it to you this way. We could we could break into two steps. My fear. Is that we won't be back in front of this council to have a real conversation about this for perhaps another six months to a year. And if we think that these are the common sense smart things to do, and we're already looking at the use table and I'm already. In front of them making the case that this is a reasonable use to allow in a business or industrial zone. Why wouldn't we touch the other low hanging fruit?
Well, I I just just gonna make, when you make this presentation of the council, I think you've been breaking down into the E for S's.
Yeah.
Do you want a P or do you want them an N? Because I think that's what everybody was operating on. That's the way we presented this to the council.
Yeah, yeah.
The way we presented.
I'm I'm not, I'm not afraid to let them know, and I could create a differentiation. Now, the truth is that the second we turned it from an S to an N, the code's the code now.
No, I get that, but.
They're all equal now. They're all allowed.
They're not, no, no, they're not equal because that that was a stopgap effort to protect the town from. The, you know, the new state law that said S's don't exist unless you have a specific and objective criteria, and we didn't have one.
Yeah.
So that's the, I just thought that was the beast we were wrestling.
It's it, you're correct. It started as the beast we were wrestling. Now, the truth is that not all S's came back in this first effort. Um, you know, there's a lot of S's that were like, that's too complex. We're not just gonna turn that back to a yes. Then we turned our effort, you're right, the effort with the task force threw into. We're also here to make the decisions that we feel are the low hanging fruit. And it felt to us like low hanging fruit was to look at industrial zones and to turn some businesses on, and I can present this to the council. With, here's the ones that are color coded as this was an S before, and here's the ones that are color coded that this was a no before. At the end of the day, we think it's worth turning to a yes either way, but imagine. How complex the conversation gets when we have to unwind that. I don't mind, David, if you think it's better to be transparent and to show it.
Absolutely.
But I'm trying to keep, you know, with two hours, I'm trying to get as much progress.
Well, then I would walk in there and say there were thirty-four S's. And here's why we think twenty-four should be P's.
Right.
That's the simple conversation that you get done in in two hours.
But the growth is happening now.
I I understand.
Can't get behind the growth. The real issue is that those industrial zones were created when they thought Reservoir Road was gonna go through, and that was gonna be the industrial park. And it got split in two.
Yep.
And then other uses started popping up around it like on one end of Reservoir Road, residential, all the mobile home parks. And then if you go down, and as I said when we were doing this the first time, what really should happen is those I one and I two zones should be rezoned. To whatever the hell we want them to be, and that's it. They're not gonna be industrial.
Lots of steps. We're already thinking ahead, but there's lots of steps.
I, yeah, and I'm not trying to, I'm just kind of.
Yeah, yeah.
I I think I kind of agree. We just need to be transparent and say, hey, you may recall, we had to do this, so we shut the S's off and we went back, but while we were taking a look.
Yeah, yeah.
We felt that these sixteen locations that are currently industrial, we should permit some business uses, and we've outlined those in the table.
Yeah, now this is gonna have some extra wrinkles, and I don't wanna add more wrinkles because we're close to the end here. I think I wanna hear the devil's advocate's side of this, which is that if we have, I should draft this code in a format that has a color coding. So that, you know, the the code reads, this is uh, this was an N, we're turning it to a yes. If it was blue, that means it was once a special use permit. If it is green, that means it was never a special use permit. It was always not permitted. And that doesn't change the fact that we want them all permitted. Just understand there are two categories that we want permitted. Now.
And and the and the explanation being. Especially use permits, as we told you before, we're gonna end up being allowed because we didn't have a criteria.
Yeah.
We looked at it and we decided the items that we now say P, they should be allowed by right. And then while we were reviewing this, we found these other locations and we did not see the harm. In shape and allowing uses, and those are color coded this way. That's fine, and let them decide.
Now, there's a wrinkle to all of this that I need that needs to be solved, and David's not gonna like to hear this.
No, no.
Um.
I like everything you're saying.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I'm just, I'm just explaining.
No, I don't mind it.
He's not criticizing.
No, 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 no. I I say this because you're gonna say that's a big lift, Doug. The truth is that we're heading to a place where I one and I two by our code are looking almost identical. And that was never that different from the vision of the town. They were almost always treated identically. Um, our I ones generally are bigger lots in the middle of the town here, here. There's a few I ones down here. This is actually, this is where you're gonna see, I can't, I won't get into it, but this is that.
Yeah.
New proposal you're gonna see in a few weeks.
And what's that residential?
Uh, it's owned industrial.
No, but what's it mixed use? What's he proposing?
No, they're doing fully fully commercial. So and then our I twos were always these little districts that were over here. They were kind of our mill districts. Smaller in scale, smaller lots, but we always allowed very intensive industrial uses. There's out of all of the I one and I two districts in the entire town, there's two little regions. That staff don't feel should get a boost in the amount of uses they get for very specific reasons. The first one. Is here, Farmeron. Do you guys, is anyone here familiar with Farmeron?
First chemical.
First chemicals, currently Farmeron. It's gated here. This is not a public road. It's a private road. This was always basically a chemical plant. There's a few other uses down here that are almost like friendly neighbors to Farmeron. They still have to largely go through Farmeron's gate. This is not appropriate to allow retail. This is, this is not the place for retail.
No, no.
This is just a pocket of I two, not all of I two. It's a pocket of I two that we think this, I don't mind, keep what you got. But we're not giving you more and you're not ready for more, and it's largely because of the access and the transportation issue. There's one more pocket that's like that. It's the Mike Beard special, Airport Road. So Airport Road is over here. Mike Beard owns most of these lots. And he does have some industrial operations over here. And we think this area, because of the access that has to go through this small residential road, largely through a fully residential neighborhood. It's not appropriate for this to end up with heavy retail use. The transportation system won't support it. All the other lots. It's supportable. The roadways are there, the access is there. It's not gonna make a bad neighbor. So where we're headed. Is that honestly, there's a few ways to skin this cat. What is it?
Hmm.
Yep, yep, yep. Um, where we're headed is that this area here. And the Farmeron area, so the lots by Airport Road largely owned by Mike Beard and the lots over here at Farmeron. To probably get a different designation. Maybe we call it I three. And now we're talking about.
Well, that's a whole different thing.
Exactly.
That's a zone change.
I did tell you, you weren't gonna like it.
Well, because you're talking, you have to, don't change, you know, that you have to notify, you gotta notify everybody.
It might be that that's worth doing here, because all the rest of the.
Why don't you do that first before you change the cable?
We have to do it and we we wouldn't do one unless we knew we were gonna do the other. We'd do it in a. And I'm not saying we race ahead with this.
Okay.
But I'm saying.
You're not gonna get that done simultaneously with this.
Uh, the rest of this, the use table might end up being the first point of conversation, and then you and me vet it more thoroughly, and then we bring it back, not racing it ahead with the others. Because to do it right, we can't turn all these uses on industrial and have this remain a problem and the other remain a problem. We have to have a solution to those problems while we increase the use.
Why not? Why not create a new zone that you move everyone to that's more open for them?
It's possible.
And then that way, we don't create. Fighting against someone and being more restrictive. You're allowed, you're giving someone more.
Right, and when you win the zone, geez.
You could, what you're thinking is like, how about this, Doug? Leave I one and I two the way they are, create I three and allow everything, and then take. Eighty percent of your industrial lots and turn to I three. David's question is still the same. You're still doing a zone change. You still need to get.
Yeah, but you're not, you're you're giving, when you do that, though, you're allowing more use for those property owners. You're not giving them less use.
Correct.
How about, you're not, you're not, you're not creating, you're not creating a hardship for one, you're giving more some more.
Opportunity.
How about you just leave those I and change the ones we want to allow the other uses to general business and up near uh West Warwick there in Harris. Residential and do do all the zone changes at the same time.
There there, you you're all, these are not all bad ideas. In my opinion, we, general business and industrial aren't quite synonymous. We do allow some manufacturing industrial things that we always allow industrial that we're not allowing in general business. We are allowing a lot more businesses in industrial because we see them as being a little less of a nuisance. Now, the truth is, there's a lot of ways to skin the cat. But I knew that David's first reaction to you don't just create a new zone without that being a pretty heavy handed process with a lot of notice. And a lot of recognition for all the issues. And that solution, in my opinion, needs to come hand in hand. We don't turn all of the uses on here until we have a solution here. We don't turn all the uses on here until we have a solution here. I think there's a few ways to handle it. One is that. Why would we have I one and I two have almost identical standards and keep them both and create an I three? We could say one is we're gonna be I one. One is gonna be I two. I two will get these limited areas with limited uses. That's probably the cleanest way to not add erroneous sections to our code. It's still, to David's point. Requires, you're changing the zone from one to the other. You're adding uses from one to the other.
Two zone the same now on both I two or both I.
No. This is I one.
Yeah.
Farmeron's I two. The rationale behind this is much more of like a of regular generic land use planning exercise of there's transportation limitations. The rest of all of this. Is a more of an analysis of uses being appropriate.
I'm gonna go with what what John said. Find the areas that we want to allow more uses and we.
It will be all of them except those two areas.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So it's actually, these are more the exception than the rule. There's more lots that we wanna increase.
Call it a business industrial zone BI and allow all the uses that you've got proposed in the table in all the other areas but those two.
Wait, do what?
BI.
BI?
Business industrial.
Either way you cut it, we're heading to some form of significant zone change. The quietest, the quietest version of this is probably to make sure that there's a zone that just remains the same. And you know, the idea would be whether we called I one or I two, one of these zones doesn't change. And we re-designate those areas to the zone that doesn't change, and we create a zone that gets all the new uses, and we re-designate everything. There's two uses now. There is a difference between how we treat industrial and business, so I don't wanna start treating them as though they're hand in hand.
All I'm saying is, it's time, it's time we looked at the zoning districts. It's been years, twenty years since we.
More than twenty.
In that area up in Harris, everything's going residential, even the garage, Sprays Auto, they put apartments in there. Bill's Pizza, the fire station, they put apartments, the electric uh manufacturing place, Victor Electric, all apartments. That whole thing should just be rezoned residential right now, and if there's already a commercial use, they grandfathered in.
I don't mind the big ideas.
But it doesn't solve the short term problem.
The short term problem is that we wanted to turn uses back on. And there is a version of this where we could do a scaled back. And the version that scaled back is that we turn the business uses back on in the business zone. We turn some industrial uses back on in the industrial zone. And we do that on February fourth, and then we say all of the work to turn industrial zones into more of a mixed hot pot business industrial is a future effort. That comes along with some zone changes. That's probably. Taking the work effort that we have good intentions on and just slicing part of it off and saying, let's get out of here with something we can get that's clean. That doesn't need a zone change, or a property zone change, I could say, or a like a change of zone for a specific property. That's the cleanest. We're not accomplishing everything we set out to accomplish, which was that we did wanna turn industrial uses into more of open. To do the rest of it's probably more study. You might have good ideas.
To do the right thing and bold think on all the efforts, and if you've got a consultant, let's just.
Does our consultant know how to?
Doesn't have to be done somehow.
No, 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 no. We we. Exactly.
You're not trying to get the council to move on this in one meeting? That's your plan?
That. I'm trying to make as much, I'm trying to make as much reasonable progress. Now, the February fourth.
This is, this is.
The February fourth is the end of the conversation. February fourth is the end of the conversation. It's it's a non-binding, non-voting. Here's an introduction. The truth is, is that if they're like, hey, I still have questions. Well, are are we close enough to put this in front of you for a first reading and I'll present to the council again? When we get to the hearing, I can present to the council again. The idea is to get past, this was not a, this was actually helpful. If the idea from this board is that Doug. Um, let's not take the biggest bite here. Let's not even take the medium bite. Let's take the smallest bite of the use table. Let's drop the industrial effort. Let's let industrial lie and then just focus on turning on businesses in the business zones. And then let's tackle industrial as a separate effort when we're ready to rezone.
I like the color coding and tell them, this is what we originally envisioned. We decided that we might wanna take a step back. This is the immediate need. We're gonna be looking at the next step, and there could be a third step which involves re-zoning. And let them decide. And if they say, oh, Doug, why don't we just go ahead and do the whole thing? Say, I'll go and do the whole thing now, but it seemed like that was an awful lot to do, and if we wanted to think it through. We'll just, let's just turn the business back on. In the zones where we we know they're, they were allowed by special use permit. I mean, you don't have, you can do.
Yeah, let me think it through because to even explain to the council, there's a future step coming. About industrial, that's probably a half an hour.
Well, you don't have to tell them it's industrial. Just say, we wanna take a better look at these other properties where we thought of, I'm the use would be allowed, and we're not sure. The best way to handle it, but we wanted to let you know.
Yeah, yeah. The hope is that by the end of the meeting, the council said, I'm sick of talking about this. Do what you want. We trust you.
All of this.
Truth is, is that David's like, I trust you too, but I'm gonna keep a close eye on what's happening because David, I mean, David has. I knew once we started talking about changing zoning designations. This was I one, let's turn it to I two. That's a bigger deal than saying, let's take our zones and let's add a few uses. Two different types of scales of change.
No doubt.
That's why I knew that it would raise David's.
Well, I just don't think the council's aware that that we've gone beyond the scope of their charge.
I wouldn't say the council had a specific charge.
Well.
I would say that we started with the charge. We did evolve that. At the end of the day, the council that's here today probably doesn't have a strong recollection of what were we doing again? Like, what what's the use table thing again?
They weren't even on.
Trying to get more bang for your buck. You're getting it all through now.
I think this is what you wanted. Ordinance changes, and if you wanna broach the thing on the table.
To stick with the business?
No, just, well, either that or tell them this maybe, this package needs to go. The other one, we need to do something about short term. And if the long term solution, we got a couple of options, uh, we wanna get this in front of you today and explain it, and then you guys can have your own discussions. Sooner or later, someone's just gonna have to sit down with Hillary and say, what do you, how do you want us to proceed? Cause you guys are the ones. The council's the one that's gonna do the ads, have the public hearings, right? All that bullshit. They might say, we don't have the. We get enough problems right now we're dealing with. We're not gonna deal with that. If you've got some changes you wanna make to the use table, come back and bring those, but we're not getting into the, the rezoning.
So here's two options. One is that we only bring the text changes, we save use table aside. The other is that we could bring the use table with a limited purview of uses that we don't touch industrial. And then the third option, which is probably where we're not heading, is to show them the future vision of what's happening with industrial. And say, maybe we're not ready for that change, but I wanna give you a preview. I wanna go around the table, either just the text changes, no use. The text changes in the small scale use, or the text changes in a bigger scale use. What's the, what's the vibe around?
The middle.
The middle? Okay, thank you Kevin.
Yeah, definitely the middle.
Yeah, I think the pack that we started off with is, is ju, is more important. As much important as the one we ended up with, because they're gonna want accessory dwellings. I already got, I already got calls on accessory dwelling. I think those are gonna be, they need to get a handle on those, cause they're getting calls on accessory dwellings.
And you have. No, I think we'll get through that no matter what.
And then this last shot, you can, you can kind of condense that a little bit.
Maybe condense that. Out of the three, out of three options, who likes the middle option?
The middle.
Middle.
I'm gonna tell you that I like the middle, but I don't want you to bite off more than you think you're gonna be able to get through. If you say, no, I gotta go with number one, that's fine.
But the truth is, it's hard to predict. The, the council could wanna talk for an hour and a half about eighty years. And, and the. And I can only, I can only try my best, but the idea is if we get through it and we're looking at, hey, we can actually talk about the use table. We've got forty five minutes on the clock. I'd love to get through it.
You should, but if you don't feel like you're gonna be, the fleet, it's not right, then, then don't, don't.
No, I think really, you're, Thomas guy in the room, you articulate all this shit pretty good.
Right.
To the point where they're gonna get it quick. I think they're gonna get this quicker than, uh, we expect. So, and this guy is gonna be here.
Alright.
What I would say, you, you may wanna at least reach out. Maybe you could have a, a preview with at least the, you know, president, the vice president. Not the whole, full Friday day.
I, I'm happy to do that with them.
I mean.
Um, I mean, they're busy, and I know the council president is out of town. I think the council president's already out of town right now.
I forget it. Yeah, I was just trying to, I was just trying to, so it doesn't come in.
Well, the other thing is, it's hard to warm them up on materials if, if like you and Steve are fully signed off. We've seen these, we agree. We basically have about ten days till I wanted to distribute stuff.
Yeah.
It gives you ten days to kinda like, hey Doug, I told you through this. I found a few myself.
Terrible. Now, I'm feeling very good.
The work is done.
Yeah.
Dude, I think it's, I'm not, I agree.
He does, you, you're gonna get.
We have not seen the progress in, in planning and zoning that we've seen, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong. What's been accomplished in the last year.
Yeah.
Oh, in twenty years.
Yeah, yeah.
It definitely hit the nerd factor up here. I'm gonna turn you into a nerd.
David, that's how special use permits involve, involve.
Oh, right.
By not doing zone change. That's why if you write your commentary, it's spot zoning. Everyone's spot zoning.
Who did not?
That was the answer, the knee jerk reaction.
Special use permit. Yeah, first off, I appreciate the compliment. Alex deserves a lot of credit. I do the talking, Alex is. Making sure I'm not messing.
When I say that.
I think that all in his eyes right behind you. He sets.
He sets the tone I endorse.
He sets the tone and goes out first.
When I say that, I mean the whole staff. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion second.
True. Thanks, guys. You thought this was gonna be an easy meeting, huh?
Yeah.